Good evening. It is Tuesday, October 13th. It is 6:33 PM. I'd like to call to order the Groton Town Council Committee of the whole regular meeting. Councillors present are Baumgartner, Franco, Heed, Melendez, Aubrey, Anne Granatowski, Councillors Parker and Zepary, and Bordalán are not with us this evening. Calendar and Communications, Councilor Baumgartner.
Good evening, everyone. Nothing to report.
Councilor Franco.
Yes, thank you. This past week, I met with Officer Moreau, Schneider, Wellsnick, and Sergeant McAndrews, and we had a discussion regarding community policing, and we had the approval of the town manager and the police chief to do so. It was a good meeting. I would like to send my condolences to the two citizens of Groton who have passed away this past week from COVID, and I just want to let the community know that every time we receive these emails, letting us know that somebody has passed away in our community from COVID, it just breaks my heart. And I really want to encourage our community to please do everything that, you know, that's necessary to keep yourself safe and sanitize six feet distance, wear your mask. I mean, it's just, it's just heart wrenching that this is hitting our town as hard as it seems to be hitting, you know, the area, actually. And I wish everybody would do their best to try and stay safe and healthy. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bordalán is with us, so we are at seven councillors this evening. Thank you. We are on to Councilor Heed.
This past Wednesday, I attended the joint RTM Town Council Public Safety Committee meeting, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Aubrey.
Just been busy at work.
That's good.
Yeah.
Councilor Bordalán.
I, I just want to make sure I was in at 6:30. I was still sitting in the attendees. I did hear you do roll call, and I was here. I also, like councillor Heed, attended the Joint Safety RTM meeting. Thank you.
Councilor Melendez.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. I attended the Town Council Board of Ed, RTM, City meeting, and we had the leadoff from Dr. Grenier, who talked to us about the situation at Groton Middle School with the COVID and the move to remote learning temporarily. They will be back on the 19th with kids back in the building. All things hopeful on that front. The gym floor is finished, and the bleachers are going to be installed this week. They're working on the fields. There was supposed to be another topping off ceremony today at Cutler. It's been delayed due to rain. In addition to that news, they are still in the middle of hunting for a new superintendent. So they are meeting with members of the search committee. They have surveyed 500 parents with regard to obstacles and pros, cons with the hybrid model. The city of Groton reported out on the milling that's going on, on Clarence B. Sharp Highway and Eastern Point Road, and it was also noted about the road diet on the road in front of EB, and the fact that Electric Boat and the city both have temporary opposition to that due to the construction. The RTM moderator Evan reported briefly on the conversations with the public safety group that they have going, which I believe councillor Heed said he had attended. And the Finance Committee met regarding the tennis court path. If you recall, that the pavement area between the two tennis courts and Finance was not recommending, if I recall correctly, was not recommending to cover that, but it goes to the full RTM on Wednesday night for consideration. And that's it. I've been in contact, I've been contacted by a gentleman who lives at Pequot Village regarding some issues he's having, and I have forwarded his concerns to the Groton Housing Authority. So hopefully, we can get some resolution as far as that goes. All right, we are on to item four, and the manager's office forwarded revised minutes this afternoon. So I hope you all have seen those, the revised minutes. Is everyone good with that? So the, the main difference was in the inclusion of information from our discussion on roads and the road funding. So there was a gentleman's name added to the roll call. And in addition to that, I'm looking for the page, 5B, item 5B, Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation, his name was added there. And then there was a remark included from Finance Director Landry, and I believe that's the extent of the changes. So, Councilor Baumgartner, would you like to move acceptance of the minutes, please?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of September 22nd, 2020. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Aubrey. Is there discussion on the revised minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm going to abstain.
Six in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. Bordalán.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to 5A, 2020-615 Community Connectivity Program Grant. This is on page 12 in your packet. And I believe we are on councillor Franco, because councillor Parker is not with us this evening. Councilor Franco, please.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving town manager John Burt or his designee to execute all grant documents and accept grant funding for the Community Connectivity Program Grant in the amount of $344,388. I assume of.
Second.
Can't hear you, Mayor.
Thank you. I try to mute when you guys are talking. Moved by Franco and seconded. That was Baumgartner, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. All right. And this is on page 12 in the packet, if you guys needed to look at that. Mr. Burt, is there anyone from staff that wished to address this? Mr. Barry, perhaps?
Yes. Good evening. So I am here this evening requesting authorization from the council for the town to apply for a Community Connectivity Program Grant for the sum of $344,388. The grant funds initiatives that will provide or improve safety and accessibility for bicyclists and pedestrians in community centers. The grant supports construction, infrastructure improvements for people to walk, bike, and take transit. And if you look at the map that was provided, if we start over on the left-hand side, you'll see a red arrow that runs down Depot Road, and that's one of two extension, proposed extensions that are included in this grant. The work that is proposed for Depot Road would be a six-foot wide on-road bike lane with curbside parking along one side. Presently, parking is allowed on both sides of that road, which forces people riding their bikes either ride in the middle of the road or to use the sidewalk. And if there are narrow sidewalks on that road, so a bike and pedestrian sharing a sidewalk is not something that, there's better alternatives to that. Work on the east, what I'm calling the eastern extension, would be, if you look towards the middle of the map, you'll see another red line that starts at kind of the end of the Lilly Lane Trail, which is noted with green dots. That is the current terminus of the Trolley Trail at Knoxville Court. And this proposal is to, from Knoxville Court, go out onto Midway Oval, take a right, and follow Midway Oval all the way around to, there's a right-of-way between a couple of homes on Midway Oval that provide access to Sutton Park. That section would also, is currently proposed to be an unload, on-road bike lane, six feet wide. Once we get into Sutton Park, we're proposing a 10-foot wide bike path that would follow along the property, the edge of the property, and go out to the front section of the park and actually connect up with the existing bike lane that is, runs along Route 1. So the goal is, for this project, is to increase pathway connectivity, creating safe connections to an existing bike path, and to increase the comfort level of non-motorized users making trips on foot and bicycle. This project will improve conditions for walking and bicycling by providing both on and off-road facilities. So why here? We are looking to extend the Trolley Trail Bike Lane. The first section of this project along Depot Road actually is the first segment of the east-west connector to go from Depot Road to Thompson Road, and it's also the first segment of the Tri-Town Trail, which would eventually extend to Preston. So this, this first section on Depot Road is a key section to a couple of major bike trails that are planned for the future. As you're all well aware, this project is in the Paquonic Village, which is a Paquonic Bridge, which is an historic village. And within the Paquonic Bridge is the Four Hill Neighborhood, and there's a neighborhood revitalization zone. And one of the objectives of the NRZ is to revitalize neighborhoods through collective involvement of residents, businesses, and governments to determine the vision and priority of the individual neighborhoods. And part of that strategic plan for the NRZ includes addressing infrastructure problems to solve pedestrian traffic, both foot and bicycle. So, support for this. In 2020, over this summer, we conducted a community needs assessment, and increased trail and pathway connectivity was the second highest scoring need identified in Groton households. And this was a statistically valid survey. Thirty-five percent of community needs respondents answered the question, what are the most important items that would increase your use of parks and recreation? More security lighting along parks, trails, and facilities was identified, and we are proposing the section that goes through Sutton Park to have that lit using solar power. The 2004 Bicycle Pedestrian and Trails Master Plan identified several goals, interconnecting neighborhoods, including residential areas to shopping, schools, parks, and other local destinations, and developed recreational trails that provided access to public open space. And the project that we're proposing does both of those. So how do we know that people are going to use this? In 2018, we did a design improvements study through VHB, and part of that study included a survey of residents, and data from the study showed that 66% of families would probably or definitely ride on an on-road bike lane. So there's a good amount of support for this, knowing that people will use this. And again, the project will help to keep bikers from riding in the middle of the road. It will also reduce conflicting bicycle and pedestrian use of sidewalks. So we are proposing that the council authorize the department to submit an application for a Community Connectivity Program Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Did, Mr. Burt, did you need to add anything to this?
No, I have nothing else.
Okay, I just want to note for the public that the council received two letters of support, one from Ledgelite Health District in support of the grant, and one from Bike Connecticut, I believe, Mr. Brian Kent. They are both in support of this. Okay, so we will go to councillors now, and I see a couple of people have their hands up. Give me one second, please. We have councillors Aubrey and Franco.
We're the only ones here.
Do I speak first because it's my motion?
I'm sorry?
Because I put the motion on the floor, do I get to speak first?
Would you like to speak first?
Please.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Barry, on Depot Road and Midway Oval, looking at the diagram, will there be, how will the trail go through there? And will you be removing parking?
Well, on Depot Road, there's currently parking on both sides. And part of the VHB study that was done a couple of years ago to look at connecting Depot Road going out onto Route 1 and onto South Road, their recommendation was that parking be moved to one side of the road. So I'm not sure if that qualifies as eliminating parking or just moving it to one side of the road. I, I'm not familiar enough to know that all of those parking spaces along the road are filled on a regular basis.
Okay. I, just from my experience at Paquonic Bridge, there's not always enough parking in the yards to accommodate two cars.
And I think that's why there's, there's on-road parking.
Right. So it concerns me of losing parking. I didn't know if it was going to be. So you're not widening the sidewalk?
No, that, that's not part of this, because that would be, that would take a lot more work, because you'd actually end up be taking properties if we were going to be widening the sidewalk. So that would be a much more complex problem or project.
Right. Well, the parking does concern me. And, and did you talk to the neighbors in the community about that? And what was their reaction?
Not specifically for this project, but they were surveyed, VHB, we put out a public survey with the VHB project, and I don't recall that there was, most of the folks that came to the public meeting were on South Road, because one of the proposals was an off-road bike lane, and they were concerned about that, given the proximity of their houses to the road. I don't recall anybody from Depot Road showing up and expressing any concerns about having all the parking shifted to one side of the road. And I did have a discussion with Brian Kent this afternoon, and he actually mentioned the possibility of creating two bike lanes, which would be outside of where parking is. So there would not be any loss of, potentially any loss of parking spaces. But it was a very brief conversation, and he said that they were willing to help us moving forward with this if, if the town was interested.
And also the Sutton Park, where the fields are, the Spritzfield Task Force was looking to put, potentially, like redesign that area and put three fields in there. And I believe Brian Kent had done that design along with Jerry Locken. I had viewed that at their meeting. And this one actually would go through grass area that they are, I believe, trying to squeeze in three fields in that area. Do you know anything about that proposal?
I do. I've, that proposal is similar to what was proposed back in 2009, when the town did the master plan. There was also a Sutton Park master plan. What is drawn in here is conceptual, and I did speak to the engineering department and made it clear that the goal was to try to keep the path as close to the property line as possible to minimize any interference with potential fields in the future. So, you know, this is, again, this is just a conceptual to submit as part of the application. We would, moving forward, certainly, again, the goal would be to minimize any disruption to putting additional fields in here, because we recognize that there's an absence of space for fields. I also know that they're looking at a number of other spaces besides just Sutton Park to put in fields. So, you know, if they can't fit three fields in here, they are looking at other locations to, to potentially put in fields.
Okay, thank you very much.
We have councillor Aubrey and Heed.
My question was just about the same as Rachel. I think that, I'm very happy you're doing this grant, and I certainly do support it. I'm just thinking that maybe in the interim of when it's being processed, we could reach out to the neighbors again, because down through there late at night, that's a pretty compact area with cars, and there isn't a lot of extra space. So I think we might want to do that, so that when we get this grant, we're prepared for maybe an alternate situation. That was my only concern about it. And if I could ask a question that's off-subject?
I guess it depends on the question.
I wonder if we got any response on the sign for 95?
I was hoping you weren't going to ask that. I, I have not followed through with that as well as I should have. So you've shamed me, and I will get on that.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay.
Councillor Heed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to express support for this project. I concede that the points councillors Franco and Aubrey brought up about discussing this with the neighbors is important, but I'm really happy to see that we got a grant for this, and couldn't be more excited about it. Thank you.
Councillor Bordalán.
Thank you. I also do agree with, you know, councillors Aubrey and councillor Franco. I do think it's important when we look at changing infrastructure and different ways and designs in communities that we do have maybe, maybe a second attempt to reach out to discuss possible changes and concerns, but also just working with Ledgelite Health myself. And one of the things in the region that, when they were looking at childhood and obesity and different health concerns that people have discussed is walkability and being able to safely go out and ride bikes, or walking, walking areas within their community that connect, so that they didn't have to maybe take their vehicle and use alternative forms. We have a lot of open space here, trails, which are wonderful, but the connectivity to be able to, that this would provide to be able to connect one section to another, I think is great. So I just want to say that I do support this, and I also do agree, I just hope it doesn't shave away any of the fields that are down there, because we also have a field shortage. So it's a bit of a bunch of little issues, but I think it's great, and I think it's great that we have a grant to do such, and I'm excited to see where it goes. But I also think it would be helpful to have another session and get some more of the community opinions on the parking issue. Thank you.
Councillor Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to align my remarks made by councillor Heed and Bordalán to support this grant proposal. Thank you, Mark, for the presentation. As you mentioned, you know, you had a conversation with, with Brian, and, you know, I spoke with, you know, you and him as well about it. You know, I couldn't agree more with, with councillors Aubrey and Franco about the need for public input, you know, even recently in the city of Groton. You know, in terms of the road diet, Mayor Granatowski mentioned the state solicited, solicited, you know, public comment from residents in town. And, you know, there were several people in town who, who did respond with testimony. And so I think it is important, obviously, to solicit resident input, especially considering if it, you know, is a project that it takes place right in their backyard, they should absolutely have input. So that should be welcomed. And again, any effort we can take to invest in our bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure should be welcomed. I know this, in some variation, is one of several projects that have been introduced to this council through capital improvement projects. And I know in times past, this has come before us, but due to financial constraints, we could not move forward with that, those projects. So hopefully with the, you know, in receiving a state grant, we can move forward with these investments and start investing in other critical needs in our town. So again, thank you, Parks and Rec, and as well as their director, Mark Barry, for their work on this.
Is that all, councillor Baumgartner? It ended kind of abruptly, I wasn't sure. Okay, I'm going to take my turn. I would like to thank Parks and Rec and Mr. Barry for pursuing this. This is the kind of project that we have been talking about being able to do. And as councillor Baumgartner mentioned, we haven't had the funding, we've had other priorities. So I'm absolutely thrilled that Parks pursued this grant, and we'd be able to get this done through grant funding. So thank you very much for doing that. And I think it is something that would be good for the whole community, and it will get lots of people up and moving about. And I look forward to a positive outcome. Councillor Melendez, before I go to second-time speakers, did you wish to speak, sir?
No, nothing. I won't be supporting it as well, but nothing other than that.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Franco, you have your hand up for the second time.
Thank you. So, Mr. Barry, how did you reach out to the homeowners on this? Did you, I know many of the homes in there are rentals. Did you reach out to the owners, or were they sent to the actual residents?
I don't think it was a mailed survey. I believe VHB, it was, well, actually, it was a few years ago, and I do recall getting mailing addresses, so there actually might So there actually might have been something mailed to the homes. I would have to go back and confirm that. I can't say with 100% certainty. But I also know that the survey was available online through the town's webpage. And it was posted on various social media, you know, Facebook and, and other websites, letting people know that the, the town was considering this and were, was looking for community feedback.
Okay, when is the grant deadline?
The grant deadline is this Friday. It was a pretty short window. They gave us about six weeks to put the whole thing together. There was additional money was noted, I think sometime in September, and they gave us a deadline of the 16th to get this submitted.
Okay, also, so on Midway Oval, Depot Road, is there a possibility or even north the, the court down there? Is it possible to even remove sidewalks on one side of the street? Like widen the road basically and put the bike path on the inside of the cars, like on the roadside? I, I just don't want this neighborhood to lose parking. I mean, on this neighborhood park on the side of the road.
Yeah. Not being an engineer, I can't answer that question, but I am certainly have heard clearly from the council about the concern of, of lost parking spaces and would take that into full consideration as we move forward with any type of work along that road. Yeah.
Because I'm definitely for biking and bike paths, absolutely. But the problem is, I mean, this is going to affect people's daily life, daily. So it, it really does concern me that we don't have an answer for that right now, though. And if, and if I'm correct, if we go for the grant and let's just say it comes up that we're going to lose parking and I know sometimes when the town tries to notify the residents and they do their, you know, they think they're notifying the community and they're getting feedback, sometimes people don't get the notices or they didn't hear about it. And then when they do, it's too late. So my concern is that we might get into the grant, apply for it, maybe even receive it. And then people will find out about what's going on in their neighborhood and be very upset. That bothers me. So is, if you apply for this, you have to basically input it exactly?
Well, I, I think if we found that it was, we weren't able to minimize or alleviate the disruption of parking, we could let the, the state know that we weren't able to complete that section of the, of the proposed project and return that money, which is common in a lot of situations where towns get grants and then they're not able to do the entire project. Some money gets returned back and then that money gets reallocated, perhaps to a, a project that ran into some additional expenses. So, yeah, we could potentially not do that section if we found that we weren't able to work out a situation where we, you know, didn't, weren't able to make accommodations for the folks that lived on that road and there was too great of a loss of parking.
Right, because I, I see if you take consideration of Midway Oval and Depot Road, that's basically half your project and the court. That's probably about, maybe even more than half your project.
Well, I was, I was speaking to, to Depot Road. I'm not, I don't think the parking along Midway Oval is, I don't think there's as much parking along the road on Midway Oval as there is on Depot Road.
Okay, I will. Thank you. Thanks.
I have two hands, but I'm not sure. Councilor Baumgartner, I saw your hand. Was that just your help let me in the meeting hand? Or did you have to want to comment again?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. I was having some technical difficulties, so I'm back in the evening.
Great. So then we'll go to Councilor Heed for a second time.
Yes, I just want to underline and clarify, I'm supporting the, the project. I'm just suggesting that we make another effort to reach out to neighbors and get some buy-in. Not suggesting that we should not do the project or any portion of it. Thanks.
I'm surveying the situation. Okay. Seeing no further comments, I will call for a vote on 202615 Community Connectivity Program Grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven counselors. At this point, we are going to recess. It is 7:08. And recess the committee of the whole. And we need to move into the Town Council Special Meeting. So Cow is recessed at 7:08. So at 7:08, I'd like to call to order the Town Council Special Meeting Agenda for Tuesday, October 13th. Counselors present. Bordelon, Baumgartner, Franco, Heed, Melendez, Obrion, Granatoski, Counselors absent, Zeperry and Parker. So we have seven counselors with us this evening. We have one item on the agenda, Councilor Heed, 2026151 Community Connectivity Program Grant. Could you read that, please, for us, sir?
What page?
This is in the, the Town Council Agenda that came along with the packet that was sent out. Councilor Heed, do you have that? You do not? Okay. Resolution authorizing the town manager to execute all grant documents and accept grant funding for the Connecticut Community Connectivity Grant. Whereas the proposed project under the Connecticut Community Connectivity Grant will increase pathway connectivity, creating safe connections to existing bike path. And whereas it will increase engagement in physical active recreation and outdoor spaces to foster active, healthy lifestyles through eliminating barriers that prevent people from using various outdoor spaces. And whereas Groton Parks and Recreation is seeking grant from the state of Connecticut to fund the construction of two bike lane projects extending the Trolley Trail Bike Path from Knoxville Court along Midway Oval through Sutton Park and from Industrial Drive to Fort Hill Road. Now therefore be it resolved that Town Manager John Burt or his designee is authorized to execute all grant documents and accept grant funding in the amount of $344,388 from the State of Connecticut Community Connectivity Grant. I so move.
Second.
Second, Baumgartner.
Moved by Granatoski, seconded by Heed. Is there a discussion on this item for the council meeting? Councilor Franco.
Thanks. I believe I'm going to go down and actually talk to some of the neighbors in that area and I'm going to go check it out at night to see how the parking situation is. I know this may be short notice to try and get this grant through. And I'm all for biking, but this is, I mean, this is a big deal if you don't have anywhere to park and you, where you live. I mean, it's sort of a big deal. So I'm going to check into this and although I'll be voting for it and because I'm in favor of biking, I may come back to the council and I'll report what I find. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Obrion.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I don't have the map up there now, but you know, we have a road that runs behind Depot Road that goes down into what used to be the railroad turnaround. And it would seem like it might be easier to look into using that road versus Depot Road. So I would just ask that maybe that be evaluated as a good way to not have to make dramatic changes on the roads that are used all the time. I think that back road has traffic twice a day. So if I could suggest that, I will vote for this because I think it's important. But I think we might look for an alternate route for Depot Road. Thank you.
I see no other hands. All in favor of 202615 Community Connectivity Program Grant, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven counselors. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Town Council Meeting, please.
So moved, Baumgartner.
Moved by Baumgartner. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Obrion, seconded by Obrion? All those in favor of adjourning the Town Council Meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Town Council Meeting is adjourned at 7:13 PM. Thank you. So we are back to the, hold on one second, please. Give me a second to make notes. We are back to the Committee of the Whole at 7:13. And I believe this is Councilor Heed, 20205593 Alteration of Ascenic Road 1206 River Road. This is on page 28 in your packet.
All right, I will make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the alterations of 1206 River Road as presented. So moved.
Second, Bordelon.
Sorry, moved by Heed and seconded by Bordelon. I'm looking to see if there is discussion. We've been over this a couple of times now. We had a public hearing and we had a chance to ask questions and talk to the homeowner, who was graciously with us this evening again. I see no hands. Seeing none, we will vote on 20205593 Alteration of Ascenic Road 1206 River Road. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with 7:00. Thank you, Mr. Paul Antonio. We are on to 5C, 20203093 Changes to the Town of Groton Tiff Policy. This is on page 29 in your packet. And I believe we are on Councilor Obrion, please.
Whoops, I knew you were going to do that. Looking for it. Motion to recommend a resolution to approve the changes to the Town of Groton Tiff Policy as presented at the public hearing on October 6, 2020. I so move.
Second, Bordelon.
Okay, give me one second. So that was moved by Obrion and seconded by Bordelon. Did Mr. Reiner wish to speak to this at all?
John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. I'm here if anybody has any questions, but I think I've gone over the minor changes a few times already.
Yes, thank you, sir. And I'm not seeing any hands, so we will vote on 20203093 Changes to the Town of Groton Tiff Policy. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to 5D and this will be Councilor Bordelon and this is 202690 Groton Heights Property and this is on page 30. And this is just setting a hearing date. So Councilor Bordelon.
I'm just reading the motion.
Yes, please.
Okay, I make a motion to recommend the resolution to schedule a public hearing for the sale of the former Groton Heights School and recommend the sale of the former Groton High School to the RTM for consideration. I so move.
Second, Heed.
Moved by Bordelon and seconded by Heed. Again, I would throw it open if Mr. Reiner wanted to speak to this at all.
Sure, very quickly, again, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So anytime the town disposes of property that's valued at over $10,000, we need to have a public hearing and go through a certain process to dispose of that property. Groton Heights in particular, we do have a letter of intent with local business Thayer Mahan. We have not gotten into a purchase and sales agreement yet, but we do want to move forward with them developing their world headquarters at this property. And the first step is to kind of go through the public hearing process for the disposal of the property.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Reiner or comments on this item?
If I could get back on, I'd like to, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Councilor Obrion. You have the floor.
Okay. I, I was under the impression that we'd done all this before, John. That the only thing we were waiting for was the funds for the cleanup from the state, but I thought that we've done several public hearings on it. I'm kind of confused by the process, I guess.
Sure. So Paige is also on the call, so he can certainly weigh in also. But for Groton Heights, we went through the marketing of the property. We selected Thayer Mahan as the preferred developer. We also got council approval to enter into a letter of intent with Thayer Mahan. We did also receive a Brownfields Grant for cleaning up the property. And then as we're moving forward, COVID kind of set things back a little bit, but we do have commitment from Thayer Mahan that they want to continue moving forward. We did not go through this public hearing process yet that the town requires to dispose of property.
Okay, thank you. Is this, is this going to make it, is this making it a little bit more difficult for them to go forward with their project?
No, this is something that we have to do with all of our properties. The only one that we've actually done this with so far is the we still have, go through this public hearing process with all of the other schools that we want to dispose of.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. I got to go out for a minute in order to get back in. I'll be back.
Okay. Any other counselors who wish to speak? Councilor Obrion, you're still, you're still with us, correct?
Yeah, I, I just can't get the picture up, but I'm here.
We can see you. We can see you and we can hear you. Franco has her hand up, so we'll go to Councilor Franco if you need to do something with your computer. Councilor Franco.
We're sitting the public hearing and do we have any other timeline that as to the remaining items on the list for this project to get finalized?
This is Paige. I could jump in. Can you hear me okay?
Sure can.
Okay, great. So we've been in regular communication with Thayer Mahan for the past couple of years. Obviously, 2020 has been a real challenging one for them. But they call, we have meetings. They recently sent us an email as a result of a conversation we had last week. And just to put it in perspective, they did take PPP funds in order to try to, you know, keep their operations going and put them in the best position that they can. But they have recently received authorization from their board to get back on track regarding this particular project. So clearly, like a lot of businesses for the past few months, they've been somewhat hunkering down. Specifically to your question, they do have steps that they're envisioning and moving forward. They have all of their contractors and subcontractors ready to go. They've hired Fussin' O'Neill Engineering to handle their, their engineering for the property. They also have a local contractor yet to be released publicly. They also have a local contractor yet to be released publicly in order to do the construction. They've hired a legal team, McCarter and English, to deal with legal work, title matters, the land swap with the library, and the environmental remediation. The environmental remediation has been somewhat of a sticking point with them. The costs are going to be a little bit higher than what they anticipated. And they were trying to understand fully what the terms of the state's Brownfield grant for $225,000 is going to be. They fully understand that now, and they're ready to move into either the option agreement or the purchase and sale agreement as the next step in moving forward. I do want to share one of the things that's positive news. The state came down from CT Next last week as a part of their review of trip funding for year four. And two of the largest projects that are being requested for year four include the naval maritime consortium, which we have been funding for years with state funding. That's located at Avery Point, but there's another program that's being launched at Avery Point. It's called the National Institute for Undersea Vehicle Technology. So both of them would be at Avery Point. And Thayer Mahan, the reason I bring this up, Thayer Mahan is definitely at the table regarding both of those. And they really like the proximity of having those projects with Groton Heights as their future world headquarters. So they're all in, we've never doubted that. There have been delays, and then the COVID situation came up. But they definitely want to move forward. I think the next steps really deal with the legal agreements and having those come back to the town council so we can move forward.
Okay, because if my memory serves me correct, I believe it was supposed to be last October that we were supposed to be basically about signing a sales agreement and buttoning up some things. So I feel like we're off track by about a year. And I'm just trying to figure out forward, what is, like, how much longer do you think?
Well, as I said, they've just received authorization from their board to move forward, so I don't have an exact timeline. At this point, I think it's positive news that they have their contractors on board and their attorney wants to be engaged. But I can't tell you if it's 30 days, 60 days. I don't have an exact timeframe.
Okay, and I I'm just curious as to, like, I mean, I know, like, COVID got in the way, and it's sort of like maybe we're a year off track. So I'm just curious, like, if everything went smooth going forward, would we expect maybe to have a sales agreement in a year? Like, oh, perfect. What are we looking at here? Because I don't know, like, when to expect things.
I think you're going to have either the option agreement or the purchase and sales agreement. And those are just two different formats. That really is between the two attorneys. I believe that we're going to have that either by the end of end of this year or early next year.
All right, thank you very much.
The letter of intent, by the way, was signed in 2019.
Any other counselors have comments or questions for Mr. Bronk or Mr. Reiner? I'm literally hearing crickets. I heard something. It sounded like crickets. Okay, I don't see any other hands. So we will vote on 2020 690 Groton Heights property. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven counselors. We are on to 5E, 2020 Mystic Education Center, Resspler Short Term Tax Agreement for Mystic Education Property. This is on page 45 in your packet, and I believe we are on Counselor Melendez, please.
Do you want to read it?
Excuse me?
I was gonna say I could read it if you want me to read it.
Counselor Melendez, did you want to read that one, or would you like Counselor Borlon to take it?
Yeah, she could take this one.
Thank you. That's okay. Go ahead, Counselor Borlon, thank you.
Sure, he's covered me a few times when I couldn't have my motion to recommend a resolution to approve the tax agreement between the town of Groton and Resspler Homes. I so move.
Thank you. Moved by Borlon, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Aubrey. And I believe tonight we have several people here with us. Mr. Kirhan is here. Attorney Callahan is here. Jeffrey Resspler is here. Thank you, Mr. Resspler, for joining us. So would one of you gentlemen like to speak to this, Mr. Bronk or Mr. Reiner first, and then if others have questions?
Sure, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. I'll just start with the lead on this. So this short-term tax agreement was contemplated and laid out kind of the framework for it within the development agreement that the council authorized the town manager to sign last year to keep the Mystic Education project moving forward. And what this short-term tax agreement covers is during the period of time where the state of Connecticut still owns the Mystic Education Center. If during that time, for some reason, pilot payments are not paid by the state, the equivalent value of those pilot payments right now are about $25,000 a year. Resspler would then cover the cost of those pilot payments if the state did not. I mean, that's kind of the long and short of it. I'm sure Eric could explain it much more thoroughly if you're interested, but that's kind of the broad brush.
Thank you. Do counselors have questions, or would anyone like a more thorough explanation from Attorney Callahan? Does anyone have comments or questions?
Could we get an update on what's been happening? Is that appropriate at this point?
As long as it is pertinent to this item. So if we can make the response pertinent to this item, that would be most helpful. Mr. Reiner?
Sure, actually, I was gonna maybe hand that over to Paige, but I will say that we've been continuing to work internally with our consultants on drafting up zoning as it relates to the Mystic Education Center property. We're hoping that sometime in the next month, we'll be able to bring that before the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've been continuing to talk with and work with our consultants and the developer about the tax increment financing master plan that would be necessary for this area. We've been in constant communications with the developer as they're continuing to refine their draft master plan for the site. There's a lot of moving pieces to this project. Paige, I don't know if you want to jump in on any other components?
Yeah, one last component that's quite timely. We had a long conversation today with our consultant, Green Play and Piri, dealing with the Pratt Building. And the Resspler team was on the call. I think everyone found it to be of high value. We obviously are looking to find the right program in repurposing and redeveloping the Pratt Building. And today was the first day that we actually were able to share some of that information with Resspler. Obviously, that's a key component because that gets integrated in the entire program, but also, to some degree, the TIF as well. So we are making progress, as John said, on a number of components that are all coming together. Sometimes I describe it as a Rubik's Cube, but it is advancing. And I think we're pretty much on track as we had envisioned.
Thank you. Counselor Franco.
I'd like an explanation or a detailed from our town attorney, please, regarding the tax statements.
Mr. Callahan is here.
He's on mute.
I heard him sigh.
Mr. Burke, can you unmute Mr. Callahan, please?
All I can do is request. He's allowed to unmute himself right now.
Okay.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Okay. So the developer, Resspler Homes, is leasing this property from the state before it purchases the property. And the idea there is that Resspler, since this is going to be its asset, can safeguard the property and make sure it's adequately protected. And because they're leasing the property, there was a concern that that in itself could trigger a real estate tax. And right now, the town receives $25,000 a year from the state because the property cannot be taxed as a result of its state ownership. So as long as the town continues to receive that $25,000 from the state while this agreement is in effect, then Resspler does not owe any money. If the state reduces the amount of the $25,000 because of Resspler's lease of this property or its eventual purchase of the property, then Resspler would pay the difference between $25,000 and whatever the reduced amount is. And if the state completely cuts off that $25,000 as a result of the lease or the development agreement or Resspler's purchase of the property, then Resspler would pay the full $25,000. And as long as the state continues to own it as of October 1 of any year, I am told that the town will continue receiving that $25,000 for that tax year, even if Resspler were to buy it the next day. But there's no, there's no deadline on the town's ability to issue what's called a supplemental tax bill if down the road, it turns out that the town has not received the money for any given tax year as a result of Resspler's ownership or lease of this property. And the tax agreement would terminate on the earliest of the following dates. One, when a credit enhancement agreement, which is also contemplated by the development agreement, is entered into under TIF or any similar funding mechanism, you know, comparable to a credit enhancement agreement. One year following Resspler's acquisition of the property or upon the issuance of a building permit for phase one of the improvement. So if any of those events occur, then this agreement would terminate. And if you have any other specific questions, then I can certainly answer them.
Franco, does that answer your questions?
Yeah, I have another one then. So are we looking at the state not fully funding that money for this property?
Because, you know, I don't believe that the lease in itself would cause that, but we've certainly addressed that contingency. If the state were to make the decision that the lease in and of itself cuts off that payment, then it's dealt with in this agreement. So, you know, either way, it's a wash. We either get the $25,000 from Resspler or we get it from the state. The idea here, however, was not to, what I call, double dip. So if the state pays the $25,000, we're not looking for Resspler to pay an additional $25,000 on top of it. We're just trying to stabilize the situation for Resspler and for the town until any of those triggering events which would terminate this agreement occur.
Okay, and Resspler is agreeable to this?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, this was negotiated with their attorney.
It was done to protect both of us, basically.
Okay.
While we're going through the approval process.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Resspler. Do any other counselors have comments or questions? Counselor Aubrey?
Should vacuum it out.
You're on mute.
The only way to keep me put. I was just wondering if sometime, I don't know if we've done it in the past, but I'd like the council to go up and go through the building. Do you think we could arrange that?
For what, I'm sorry?
To go up and go through the building that eventually will be something that the town of Groton will be using. I can't think of the name of it.
Pratt Building.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. Anytime. As long as we have a couple of day notice, and if we have to do multiple tours, we'll gladly do multiple tours if it doesn't work with everyone's timeframe.
John, do you think you could arrange that for us?
Yes. Paige, actually, yes. Paige actually has keys to the building, so that's something we can work with the council, with John Burke and the Resspler team.
Thank you very much.
I can coordinate with the Resspler team. As you know, we've had a lot of break-ins and vandalism, and as a result, Resspler's had to take certain security measures to keep people out, so I can coordinate with the Resspler team and try to come up with a couple of dates.
Thank you.
Paige, you're aware the building is alarm that, right?
Yes, yes, I will not go in.
Yeah, if you let me know, Paige, a day and time, we'll make sure the alarms are off and, yeah.
We'll definitely coordinate with you.
Yep.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. That's great. Do any other counselors, first-time speakers, wish to ask questions? If not, we'll go back to Counselor Franco. Counselor Franco, you have the floor.
I just wanted to jump in and say real quickly, I think some of us have gone on a tour of the building, of the Pratt Building, as well as the property. But, so I'm not sure actually how many tours you would actually need to do, but, you know. Thanks.
We'll gladly make ourselves available, though.
Thank you for being so gracious, Mr. Resspler. Any other counselors wish to speak or comment? Seeing no hands, we will vote on 2020 653 Mystic Education Center, Resspler Short Term Tax Agreement for Mystic Education Property. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven counselors. Thank you, Mr. Resspler, Mr. Kirhan, for joining us this evening. We look forward to great things.
Thank you.
Bye.
You're welcome.
I can read this next one I have in front of me.
Okay, thank you. So we are on to 5F, which is 2020 352, 32nd Town Council Rules of Procedure Changes. This is on page 59 in your packet. And Counselor Melendez, please.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution adopting the rules of procedure of 32nd Town Council, so moved.
Second, Bum Gardner.
Moved by Melendez and seconded by Bum Gardner. Thank you. Counselor Aubrey, I'm going to turn it over to you if you wanted to introduce your changes or just talk to us about your process at all. I'm not sure if this is something we're going to be able to get through in one night. But hopefully, everyone has had the time to read over everything, and hopefully you have your questions all ready to go and your comments. So we will let Counselor Aubrey begin, and then we'll figure out how we want to tackle this tonight. So Counselor Aubrey, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. We put a great deal of time into trying to review everything, and the previous group had done a very good job, but we wanted to see if we couldn't make a few other changes that we felt were needed. So I don't know if everybody has read through it, but basically what we were trying to do is update it for Robert rules, because apparently there's a new addition. And we wanted to have some clarification on points of order so that we could have a process to follow. And, well, there's a great, like I say, there's a great deal here, but it all boils down to just trying to be a little bit more in order most of the time. By order, I mean decorum. And I'm probably the worst offender. But, the one that, to me, that's the most important is at the very end, and then I'll ask Mr. Counselor Bumgardner to assist me with this, but we tried to put time limitations when you're speaking, and we felt that that was very important. And we also thought that unless you have a new, when something's being debated, if there's not new information, we're not looking for the same to be put forward, because it doesn't seem to, it's not going to change the situation. You've put your thoughts forward, and that's fine. We'd like to leave it at that. And so, we put a lot of time into trying to create guidance on that. Oh, let me see. I'm just kind of doing kind of an overview. I can go back and take it item by item if you would prefer. The other thing that we were trying to come up with was under public safety. It has been reestablished, but I would, in the future, offer the fact that we should have conversations on what the name of that committee really should be. And as I was saying, I think the important thing that, to me, was under, let's see, number three, rules of procedure to govern the 32nd Town Council, the councils are limited to three minutes each time they speak on a question. After each council has spoken, if a council has a second question, the council is allowed three minutes and then yield the floor to another counselor. I think it's important that we start putting some time limits on our conversations and our debate. Counselor Bumgardner, would you like to jump in here and talk a little bit?
Yeah, Council Aubrey, I think you hit it right on the head with, that was a pretty good synopsis of, you know, some of the work we've done over the last few months, looking to clean up some of the rules language. You know, other than what Council Aubrey mentioned, probably one of the biggest changes would be just a tighter leash on speaking. So, I believe remarks or questions should be confined to about a three-minute maximum. And so, I think then, and once everyone in the council has had the opportunity to speak, then people have the option of asking questions again. But, you know, we figured that five minutes was a bit long, especially if people are going to have the opportunity to ask questions in, you know, in the future. So, aside from that, I really have nothing further to say. Great, great synopsis, again, Chair Aubrey.
I would mention that I hope you've all noticed, under the order of business, we did make some suggested changes there, too, that we would have call to order, roll call, and declare a quorum, which is a little different than how we've been doing it in the past. The other thing that I think is helpful would be deletion from the town council referral lists, move it to D, or maybe remove this. This has not been part of the packet. This item has been placed in a separate item. And as far as the department heads, I think that instead of listing them, it's best that we just put in whoever we've asked to come and talk with us. I don't think it looks too impressive when we have that list and nobody shows up. So, it would be better, I think, by invitation. And then, under other business, suggestions to have councilors report any event they have attended at that time. And then, we are following Robert's rules, and the bigger one, that there's a lot of red here, is the decorum. So, I here to try to answer any questions you might have, and if I can't answer it, I'll research a little bit more and answer it.
Okay, I just want to take this opportunity to thank Chairperson Aubrey, Councilors Bumgardner, and Council Parker for all their work that they put in on this. And they did have quite a few meetings and spent a lot of hours. And for those of us that attended meetings to bring our concerns there, we thank you for hearing us and for your deliberation, your thoughtful deliberation on this. Now, my question is, we need to decide how we wish to proceed before, I see Council Heed has his hand, but as having been through the Charter Revision Commission, when you are doing something like this, there may be, strike that word and add this line and substitute that. And so, what I wanted to do was to find out how you wanted to handle this. Do we want to take tonight, and everybody can go through and offer their concerns or their suggested changes? And then, at that point, you know, perhaps the town staff member who's doing the minutes for us can then add everything in, we can come back again and look at it and say, okay, are we good with this? Does that sound acceptable to the council to do it that way? Short of, if we choose not to do it that way, then we're going to be going through section by section, and the motion is on the floor right now. The motion was one motion to accept everything. So, I'm kind of hesitant to start making those changes at this point when I have a feeling there might be many changes. So, I would like to hear process before we start doing content, okay? So, we have Heed, Aubrey, and Franco. So, I'm going to go to the Rules Committee first and ask them how they would like to proceed with this as far as process and not getting into any content at this point. Council Aubrey and then Bumgardner.
I think if we could just talk about it a little bit, and then if there's things about how it's written, that might be best done through emails or another meeting or something, but I want to keep it as simple as possible, if it's possible.
Council Bumgardner, what are your thoughts on the process?
You know, I agree. I really don't think there's much of a rush, you know. Ultimately, you know, the process that the Rules Committee used was, you know, what changes can we make that would, you know, would guarantee that more than likely, every person on this council would support these rules changes? You know, we wanted to push rules that could be supported unanimously by the council. So, you know what, if it takes a couple of meetings to agree on a set of terms or, you know, rules for the future, that's fine by me.
So, I see Council Heed and Franco had their hands up. Are these process comments, or are you guys ready to get into the content? Council Heed, you had your hand first.
Well, it's, I sent them, I sent four questions or issues, points to the Rules Committee to take a look at, and the first one basically was related to process. Are we going through line by line? And, because they have things like suggested, you know, there are suggestions in this. I mean, is that a final thing or is this a suggestion? So, basically, I already emailed them my four questions that I had, so I don't know if we need to discuss them. I could read them, but it's up to them, I guess.
So, why don't you, would you like to share the four questions? You already said one, and then if you want to share the other three questions, if they're related to process as well, or are they content questions?
They're content questions.
Okay. All right, Council Franco and Bordelon, do you have process at this point, or are you content? Council Franco had her hand up first.
Process, thank you. I do recall us going through changing of the rules before at the council meetings. And I believe how we did it was, we sat and discussed and debated and basically came up with sort of an agreeable change, and then sent it back to the Rules Committee, and then they rewrote them again and brought a whole new rewrite to us. I mean, this was under Council Heed chairing it, but we had a very open dialogue on this, and I don't think it all should be done by email. So, I would like to do it here, and even if we just do it page by page, because I do have notes written, and there are many things that I would like to discuss. So, I don't think it's going to be a very simple process, and so, I would rather go page by page, and maybe whoever has issues with those pages or different ideas, maybe we can discuss them right here.
I concur that I think this should be done in meetings and not via email. I am concerned with level of detail that may be requested for changes. That was my only concern. But so far, we have Council Bordelon who wishes to speak.
Thank you. First, I want to thank everybody involved in putting this together. I think you don't want to dismiss your efforts. I also agree, though, that it should be done, you know, when you make a drastic change to anything, for whatever reason, it's important that it is deliberate and it is done publicly as, you know, another council may be possibly taking on these rules or changing these rules down the road. So, I think it is important to discuss them openly on the record. I kind of see this as what I would call a rough copy, right? It's, you know, it's not saying that, you know, what the effort that was put into it was not, you know, the intention was not formal or, you know, malicious or anything like that. I just think that this is the first chance to look at it publicly, and I think we should treat it as such and use this time to go through it either page by page, paragraph, however we want to break it apart, and then make our edits as we go forward. But I see this as a rough copy with room to amend and really just understand the meaning, because some things in here are open to interpretation, and I think that should be, I think rules are, good rules should have those things be discussed. So, I think it'd be important to go at it and take the time that you guys put into it, but also take the time to go into it in a proper fashion that allows for a full deliberation. Thank you.
Melendez, did you wish to speak on process question at all, sir?
No, not at all on the process.
Thank you. Okay. Council Aubrey, I think what we'll do is we will start with Rule 1, and I don't think any changes have been made to Rule 1, so is everyone content with that? And I'm going to go through, and then when we get to a place where a change was made, then we'll pause, okay? So, Rule 2, there were no changes made there. Rule 3, there were no changes made there. Rule 4, we have 4C, quorum and vote. And this is on page 2 of 11 of the rules packet. And Item C has one change, and they put in 30 minutes. Is there any objection to anything under Rule 4? I see two hands. Council Bordelon and Franco.
I just had a quick clarifying question. And I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So, we're only going to go over the areas that are red. If we're looking at the full rules, wouldn't it be important to make sure that the other parts are agreeable first before moving forward, just because it's not marked in red? I don't think, I think it should still have some discussion about it to make sure that we still agree to those things if we're looking at the full rules. Are we just looking at the red marks today?
No, I just went through Rules 1 through 3, and no one had any hands until I got to 4. That's why I just kept going. So, when I got to 4 and I saw the hands go up, that's what I'm calling on you guys to speak, so.
My hand went up earlier. I just was asking for clarification. I was waiting for you to finish speaking, because you said, you know, looking at the red areas. So, I just wanted to see, is, are we looking at the full?
Yes, we're looking at the full document. So, Council Bordelon, which section did you wish to address?
I was asking for clarification, but we moved through those very fast, so I, we could always come back to it, I guess, so.
We can come back to it right now. So, why don't you tell us which section you'd like to talk about?
I want to go back and relook at my notes, because we zoomed on and I flipped pages and you moved on to the red mark on Section 4, so I'll take a minute. Thank you.
Okay. Council Franco, you had your hand up. Did you wish to speak on one of the first four items?
You had just made a comment saying that there were no changes, and you went through. I was asking the same question, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure that we were going to be pausing on other ones that didn't have red. That's all. Thank you.
So, what I would ask is, oh, hold on, I'm getting an Adobe update. What I would ask is that if you have something on one of those sections, please raise your hand, and then we will pause on them.
Okay.
Does anyone have anything on Rules 1, 2, or 3? Rule 4. Do you have comments on Rule 4? How about 5? Rule 5, there's a typo. There's a duplication in 5A, having the title of mayor's in there twice, but that'll be cleaned up when it goes to staff to redo, I'm sure.
Right.
Anything else in 5? Rule 6, conflict of interest? Rule 7, I will start the ball rolling on Rule 7. 7A, Roman numeral 1. My concern is that you can't call to order a meeting if there's no quorum, and I think that's why we do the roll call first. So, the roll call is first, then you declare the quorum, and then you can call a meeting to order. So, you can't, you can't call a meeting if you don't have a quorum. So, that's, I would suggest that we leave it as it is with roll call first, declare quorum, and then call to order.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that change.
That's fine.
Council Franco.
To the Rules Committee, did you review Robert's rules on how it was? How do you call to order a meeting? Is it, which one is it? What does Robert's rules state?
Oh, God, I don't have my book tonight for Robert's rules. Really, we were very dependent on, oh my goodness, who's not here? Parker.
Parker, yeah.
Yeah, she kept looking things up for us, because she had the updated version, and without her being here, I really can't tell you.
Yeah, you can't call a meeting to order if there's not a quorum.
I think we thought that you have a roll call to know that they're here. Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying now, call to order. I guess we were thinking about, you have to have a call to order in order to be able to say, okay, now so-and-so is here. So, that was how we were looking at it. But I don't think it's anything that big that we can't go with the suggestion of going back to the way we had it.
So, I'm looking at the agenda for tonight, and it has call to order first and then roll call, but you can't really have a meeting. You'd almost have to, without having, say I called the meeting to order, and then there were only three of us here.
You can continue the meeting?
You don't have a meeting, you can't, without a quorum.
You can have a meeting, you just can't discuss topics.
And then what's the point in having the meeting, you know, at that point? So, I think you should have the roll call, the quorum, then call to order, but that's, you know, you guys can discuss, and I've saved my piece, so onward, upward. Whoever's next, I don't see any other hands.
Thank you.
I think we should just review what I think we should just review what Rule, Robert's Rules of Order state on how to open a meeting and see what they're, um, what they put in there.
I'll do, I'll do that.
I have another item I'd like to add for Roman numeral six, please. Responses to Citizens' Petitions, Comments and Concerns. Um, as Counselor Baumgartner had stated earlier and as, um, Chair O'Bree stated, one of the goals in rewriting the minutes was to, um, um, kind of condense, um, our, our, terms that we're taking, so to speak. I would add that we would have three minutes for each counselor to respond to citizens petitions. With, with one round.
I, I think we got into that further down. Um, which are you, where, where are you right now, Patrice? I'm sorry.
Rule Seven. Order of Business and Agenda. Roman numeral Six, Responses to Citizens' Petitions, Comments and Concerns.
Okay. I think, I think this was, you want to have something there at that time that limits it?
Yeah, I think so. Um, as, as Counselor Franco pointed out the other evening, we were two hours into a meeting and we hadn't even started the, um, the agenda yet because we were, um, very much in depth on responses to citizens petitions and communication. So I think it would be useful to have, um, to have a time limit there as well. That, that is a half hour then that we would have of responses to citizens petitions.
Okay, I think we talk about that a little further down. What, um, I'll make the note now to, to, you know, to review that. Five, review. Add.
Counselor Heed and Franco.
I would, I would just suggest that if you wanted to, that it is further down in the conduct of the meeting. Uh, but this would be before the meeting sort of begins, if that makes sense. So I would, if you want to do that, this would be the place to do it.
Okay, thank you.
And Counselor Franco.
I do not agree that we should limit our time for people to speak. I was going to get into it later on in the other, um, into the other sections where it's actually spelled out that you have three minutes. I do not agree with, um, a fellow counselor who stated, we need to get a tighter leash on speaking. I think we are elected officials and when you're giving us three minutes to speak, um, you're giving us actually less time than you are the citizens of the town. I think, um, trying to mute people or trying to, um, push them into some kind of constraint where they will be, um, sort of silenced on what they have to say, I don't think is, um, quite right. You may not like what you hear from other counselors, but I don't think trying to push them into a three-minute time period is helpful. Um, I, I listen to, um, other, uh, elected officials in other capacities and they have much longer time to speak than we do. And they also say a lot of things. And, um, so I personally do not think three minutes, I think that's, I mean, the community was in an uproar when we tried, when we put them to three minutes because we had a room full of people and you hear you are telling the elected official, we're here to represent all those people, you're only allowed to speak for three minutes. Because we're trying to basically, we, we want to rush the meeting along a little bit faster or we're trying to, as I quote, tight, tighter leash on speaking. What are we doing? I just don't understand that. I, I don't agree with it. And if you don't like what somebody has to say, respectfully, you sit and listen and you have your own opinion. Um, but, but I just don't agree with us at all.
Could I respond to that? I think.
Chairman O'Bree, go ahead.
If you were to listen to, let's say, a House of Representatives meeting or any, uh, meeting similar to ours, but on a greater statue, they have limitations. We're not saying that you can't, you can only talk three minutes. It's three minutes at a time. And you should be able to state your position in most cases within three minutes. If you, somebody, uh, could say to you, I, I grant Rachel my three minutes. But we need to find a way that we keep it moving forward and not have somebody just keep beating it because they think they're right. You know, we can state our opinion, why we feel that way, et cetera. Usually quite easily in three minutes. Then the next person speaks and then the next person speaks. But you can come back and speak again. But.
We're just talking about responses to citizens petition and.
Counselor Franco, can, let Counselor O'Bree finish, please.
Well, I think that, um, all right, I'll take it to citizens position, um, comments and our response to them. Our response to them was, is for clarification. You can ask questions, but you don't debate it at that point because that would stymie people from coming in and feeling comfortable to speak. If, if somebody comes up and they share something with us that they have a concern about, you certainly in three minutes can get whatever clarification you need. Because you're not at that point saying, I agree with you, I disagree with you. It's for clarification. So that's why I would agree with having a time limit on it. Because I don't want to intimidate, I don't want the council to intimidate the people that are coming in to speak to us. And when you go on in excess, you're not getting clarification. You're putting your own feeling out about it. And at that point, it probably isn't appropriate. So we'll debate it more, I'm sure. But just to tell you what I thought was, as we were reviewing time limits. We had not particularly, uh, debated this one, but I can see the, um, the good of, of having that because it's, it's certainly been a concern.
We have Counselor Bordelain and Heed.
Thank you. Um, I also agree with Counselor Franco. I think, you know, it's really important to remember that we're all elected. Um, and that, you know, obviously we were elected for our voices to be heard, even if different counselors, you know, don't agree or disagree. That's another beautiful thing to have on here. I think a three-minute limitation, um, I guess, I'm looking for clarification on that. Is that three minutes for the whole, um, response to citizens? Or someone's timing this for, you know, each person that speaks? Or I guess that would have to be more defined. Um, but I think, you know, trying to limit conversation, um, is not very, I don't know, it's not just, it's not very democratic and deliberate and transparent in any way. And so, um, I do take, you know, trouble with that and that's no disrespect to your, your efforts in producing this. Um, but I think it's important that, um, the community has the chance to hear, um, the proper amount of time, um, to, to speak to the people who they were elected by. Um, I also want to state, you know, on the record, as we discuss this, we are all from one party on this council and making rule changes as such, any council can come and change it. But I would also caution the idea of changing it too much to represent a, um, the majority here. Um, and making sure that, you know, these changes that you're requesting, if it had been a, a council of, um, a bipartisanship, um, I, I would, I wonder, would you want to limit your time? And you might want that deliberation to happen more effectively, um, and have the, the appropriate amount of time to do such. So, um, once that, that's my, can I finish? We talked about decorum and rules. May I finish, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Is that it is important that we are all one party and we all are very different. And, um, with that, I guess, what was the urgency to change the rules? I mean, because based on the comments that are written on here, as Counselor Franco has stated, um, one could take offense to those. Um, and it, it just seems like more of a personal attack in general to change things than more of a, of a need. Um, I think there's some parts in here that are agreeable, but, um, once again, getting back onto the section of public comment. Um, I think as a taxpayer in the town, if someone says, why didn't you comment on that? And I still only got three minutes, I couldn't finish. I mean, that's just not really fair. So I guess my question again is, are we saying three minutes for that whole section? Three minutes per person who speaks for clarification? Um, I guess I'd need some more clarifying information on that section. Thank you.
So, um, since I was the one who suggested the three minutes in this particular spot, I meant each counselor would have three minutes to respond. We have Counselors Heed, Baumgartner and Franco.
Oh yes, I was just going to say, it doesn't have to be three minutes. It could be three and a half minutes or, or four minutes or, you know, something like that. Three minutes, 13 seconds. Uh, I just wanted to, to make sure everyone understood that.
Counselor Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, if you go through the rules, the role changes that we've proposed, you'll find that, um, we still maintain, um, about a five-minute, um, maximum time to speak for some items. So I know for communications and reports, uh, counselors have five minutes to speak. So there's no three-minute, um, uh, maximum. Uh, so if you look again, uh, at the rules, you'll see that, um, if you want to speak again or have asked questions, you may do so after, um, you have asked your, uh, three-minute question. You can ask another round of, uh, three-minute questions. So, um, it just again moves discussion along and allows for other people who want to be able to, uh, get involved in the discussion, to be able to do so in a more timely manner. Um, so that, that was the, again, the, um, the thought of, uh, establishing a, a, um, you know, a time, a stricter time limit.
Thank you. And I, I pulled the three minutes from page seven, which is under your limits of debate. Item F, you have it, um, no more than three minutes there. So that's where I grabbed that number from, but certainly I'd be open to, um, as Counselor Heed said, you know, a different number. Counselor Melendez?
Yeah, I have a comment. I don't know exactly which rule to, um, state this under, but I thought, um, that our, our rules for our Cal should be, uh, I, I think it would be best if they were the same as our, our rules for the, for the regular town me, uh, council meeting or at least, um, a, a lot more similar than they are now. Just because I feel like a lot of times we're trying to remember the differences between the rules because it's a little cumbersome. So I don't know how other people feel about that, but I just thought that perhaps going forward, they could be a little closer.
Thank you. Counselor Franco, back to you.
So, um, I just pulled up a town council meeting and under receipt of citizens petition is where you can ask clarifying questions and that is it. Then responses to citizens petition is usually where the counselors can respond to what we've heard from people's comments and their concerns. Um, I, we have all known where we could have different topics out on the floor. We have had people come with, um, all different types of concerns. Um, so if you have, and there are times where we've had a room full of people and there might be five different topics that have been talked about. So you're given three minutes to respond, to try and hit them all accurately, um, within that timeframe. Also, um, I would like to say with the time limits, when are we all being timed? And who's timing us? Because I will tell you this right now, the last couple of years I've been on the council, it is sort of one of those, it's been mentioned, but nobody's doing it. So are we going to now pick certain times when we want to do it? Or are we going to do it all the time? Because they're in our roles now and they're not implemented. So I think some people, um, I think I can, I can guess why some of these are being implemented and why we're being put on the books. Um, I just don't agree with them. And I would say, I have a lot of questions usually when I, when people come before us. So if we're going to start limiting people to three minutes, you're going to be taking away a lot. I, what I perceive are questions and answers that I would need to know for me to vote on something. So just remember that when you're, you're standing by your three minutes and you're thinking, oh no, we just have to stick by these three minutes. I mean, I just don't agree with it. And especially here, we're all adults. We're not children. And I understand at certain times, some people have gone on for a very long time. I agree. But I don't think we should silence them. That's not what we're elected to do. Thank you.
So Counselor O'Bree, just, um, in Robert's Rules on page 25, regarding the call to order and the order of business. Uh, when the time of a meeting has arrived, the presiding officer opens it after he has determined that a quorum is present by calling the meeting to order. So in order to determine that a quorum is present, I would have to do a roll call first. And when I looked at the town council special meeting agenda, it has roll call, declare quorum, call to order. But the committee of the whole has it the other way around. So I think we need to, as Counselor Melendez said, we need to, um, tighten that up and make sure that they are consistent, as, as consistent as possible between the two. Um, again, I, that is, um, page 25, Section Three of, um, Robert's Rules of Order, 11th Edition. Where it discusses, um, determining a quorum before calling the meeting to order. Okay.
All right.
All right. So, um, this item that I raised at this point also ties into the time limits later on that the Rules Committee has put in place for discussion throughout the meetings. So, um, I'm not sure, again, counsel, how would you like to proceed? As far as, do we want to address that time issue now across the board? Or do we want to let, um, the Rules Committee go back, add it in, then we can come back and band it about again? I, I almost feel like we should make a decision now whether we're going to have these time limits or not.
Well, if I might.
Yes, please.
First, first of all, I can absolutely tell you this, there's nothing personal in what was put here. This was just because of the fact of, uh, some of our meetings have been, uh, embarrassing because of, uh, the way we've gone on with things. And so our effort was to change that. And, uh, you know, I didn't say, well, you know, so and so does this, so and so does that. We really were just going through, trying to find guidance from, you know, ourselves and other things that we were looking up. I, I think since that one is obviously going to be like the most contentious thing that we have, maybe we would be better to just take a couple more things of this tonight and then return and, uh, under the pot where we made quite a few suggestions, then talk about our time limit.
Okay.
Appropriate.
All right. So Chair O'Bree is requesting that we revisit, um, the question of time limits until we've moved through some of the other sections, correct, Chairman O'Bree?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Um, Counselor Franco, did you wish to speak on something else or were you going to revisit the time?
No, I, it was brought up, uh, how we're going to process here. And I would like to see the packet come back to us with all the revisions notated so they can be reread and make sure that they're in there properly without just voting tonight as to whatever we decide.
Yes, that's, that's normally how we do that. But, um, my, my question was, um, whether we were going to, um, make a broad decision or broad determination consensus as to the. as to the time limits, but we've been asked by the chair to hold off on that decision at this point, and I will, I will defer to her request at that point. So we are on then to consent calendar. And there were some changes made on the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to speak to any of the changes made there? Anything on the consent calendar?
I'm trying to find my place. What page are you on?
This is in, in your rules packet, it's page three of eleven. And this is rule seven, Roman numeral seven, consent calendar.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome. Did you want to address why you, your committee was making these suggestions here, Chairman O'Bree?
Say that again, please.
Did you wish to address the rest of the council as to why you were suggesting the changes that are listed here? Or would Counselor Baumgartner like to speak to it?
I'll be happy to do what I can do. Let's see, it's hard to remember all of it. Move to C, deletion from the town council referral list. Yeah, and under C, that was basically because of the fact that we weren't on a regular basis having our referral list. So move to D, or maybe remove this, this has not been part of packet. It's been placed in a separate item. It's, we need to know whether we're going to have it part of our regular meeting, or if we're going to keep it separate. That's basically what we're asking here. We're suggesting that it be removed. Deletions from the town council referral list.
Okay. Does anybody want to comment on that to what the committee is recommending? Okay, I don't see any hands on that. You have appointments moving to B as, oh, you're just going to bump it up in the list there?
Right.
This will be bumped up. Okay. And then that takes us over to eight. And you have some suggestions for Roman numeral eight, communications, reports and liaison reports?
Right. Communications reports, liaisons, right. We were just looking for suggestions with this one as to if they felt there was anything else that needed to be in here. And one of the things that we were suggesting was the deletion of the, of the department heads be, being listed as part of the meeting when most of the times they're not.
Okay. Counselor Franco and Counselor Heed.
I would like to have the department heads, superintendent and Board of Ed still remain there. When we, when I first got on the council, they used to come to us regularly, they would give us reports. During COVID, I tried to get on numerous occasions, many items on the agenda to talk, discuss things with the human services and with economic development, and I could not get this part of the council. And it would have been nice if they had maybe had come during department head or superintendent of schools and Board of Ed and come. And then maybe I could have asked some questions there and got some clarification and find out what was going on in those departments during COVID. We have invited people at this time. Also, we've invited the superintendent and the Board of Ed, and sometimes they can't make it, I understand that. But I don't think we should take it away because, I mean, we used to learn a lot of what was going on, and I feel like they don't come to visit us as much anymore. I'm not exactly sure why. It might just be a scheduling thing for them because they have a lot going on. But we used to learn, I feel like we learned a lot more about what was going on when we heard from them to hear topics of the day, I guess.
Maybe, oh rats, I just hit my screen and lost it. Maybe, damn. I'm sorry, I lost the whole damn thing.
All right, we're going with decorum right now, your language?
Chairman O'Bree, I'm going to let Counselor Heed go while you get your computer in order, okay? Counselor Heed.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, I don't really, I mean, if if we leave it there, like letter E for department heads, superintendents and Board of Education. I think it's like a placeholder, so I don't see any harm in leaving it there. I mean, two years ago, when we went through the rules, the discussion was that they wouldn't be there every time, obviously, but when they are there, this is where they would present a report. So that being said, I, in my email, questions had to do with, I had a question regarding eight and eleven. Communications, reports, liaison reports, other business, sort of defining what that means might be helpful instead of like, we asked the the question right here in the rules, which is why I was a little interested in what the process would be tonight, but what should be contained under communications? Maybe if we put a little bit of a definition, definition in there, communications, our emails, phone calls, conversations regarding town council business or things going on around town that we should know about. Did you know, you know, there was an accident at this bridge or something like that? Reports, if you, if I attend the tourism board and I come back and I I issue a report, because I'm now on the tourism board, liaison reports are the same thing.
Which, how much, which one are you talking about? You're not talking about the one that we had been talking about, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Let's, let's let Counselor Heed finish, and then we'll come back, okay?
It's, we were talking about Roman numeral number eight, letter E, which is part of rule number seven. Okay, so rule seven, Roman numeral eight, letter E. But I was talking about just the number eight and letter eleven, or eight and eleven, under rule seven, if that, do you understand, Counselor O'Bree?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, so that's right where I am. So you have in highlighted under number eight, the question is what should be contained under communications? And so I was suggesting maybe we define that, but then you go down below number eight, suggestions to counselors, report any events they attend here. So you could put it there, or you could say communications reports. I don't know that you need to say liaison reports, that just kind of makes a double. They're both reports. You could say communications reports and events. Or something to that effect. I don't know what the purpose was of moving the events down to eleven. That, that's all I was saying.
Okay, Chairman O'Bree, did you wish to come back in? We have other people that wanted to speak, but this is
That's fine.
Counselor Baumgartner hasn't.
Yes, I'm comfortable with leaving it as is.
And I I would concur with Counselor Baumgartner and Counselor Heed's sentiment that it's a placeholder, and we don't expect people to be here every meeting, but we do need somewhere for them to speak when they're, when they do come before us. So I I think it would be good to leave it there, just as the phrasing is fine with me, but I do agree we should have the placeholder there. Counselor Franco.
Counselor Heed had jumped down to eleven, so I didn't know if we were going to bring that into the mix as well. Or are we going to take that one separately?
Let's, let's see if there's any more comment on this one first. Are we, are we good with eight, eight E guys? Yes?
Yep.
I'm not seeing any other discussion. Okay, so Counselor Heed raised, actually, he he raised Roman numeral eight in general. And Counselor O'Bree, or Chairman O'Bree, had asked the question, what should be contained here? And so this, this is a whole ball of wax, if you will. It it involves eight, and it involves other businesses as well. So we need to consider both of those, is what Counselor Heed, I believe, was asking us to do. When we're considering eight, we should also think of eleven and weigh, weigh what we want to do there. So Chairman O'Bree, did you want to chime in first as to what your committee thought should be contained in eight and eleven?
Counselor Baumgartner, can you help me with that one?
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, no, absolutely. So do you, geez, what section would you like me to take a stab at? I mean, there's several sections contained in, do you just want me to go from this, from the beginning?
Section eight. We, we're on eight reports, and Counselor Heed raised the relationship to Roman numeral eleven, okay? So what did, what did the Rules Committee, you asked the question, you being the Rules Committee, asked the question, what should be contained under communications? And then Counselor Heed added, how does it relate to other business? So what was the consensus of the Rules Committee as to what should be in those two items?
And this, this is under rule, rule eight?
This is actually rule seven, order of business and agenda, Roman numeral eight and Roman numeral eleven.
Okay, I'm, I'm having a hard time following. I, so we were just speaking on on consent calendar, correct, under rule seven?
We finished consent calendar. And moved on to Roman numeral eight, communications, reports and liaison reports.
Okay, yes. So, so can I start on parliamentary authority?
I'm not sure. Go ahead, I'm not sure where you're going with this, but
I just, because if I, I think you, you want me to explain the changes under rule eight, which is rules of order. And the thing is that, I mean, there's, there's a lot there. And so, I mean, I, I don't want to explain everything, all the changes under rule. So my question is, why are we skipping?
Counselor Baumgartner, we're, we're still on rule seven, Roman numeral eight. So this, this is page four, right?
Yes.
And, and I was just looking for what the committee thought should be included under communications, is the question that I had asked. So when, when Chairman O'Bree, yourself and Counselor Parker met together, what was your vision as to what should be under communications when counselors have the opportunity to go around the table and speak their piece?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I, I think the committee is more generally supportive of status quo, with the exception of adding the liaison piece, as you know. You know, most counselors serve on some other task force or subcommittee. And there isn't always an explicit opportunity for counselors to make remarks on, you know, the, the meeting topics and what was discussed, and so have you. So, you know, that just clarifies in the agenda when counselors can, again, you know, make comments on, you know, those subcommittee meetings and commission meetings.
Okay, understood. So we have Counselor Bordelain and Franco.
I, I guess, do we need more time possibly to look this over, or I feel like we're just, I don't know. Feel like we're a little lost right now. Is there, do we need another day, maybe table this for a little bit and come back?
We're definitely going to be coming back to it, yes, we will be coming back to it. But I think the, I think what Chairman O'Bree asked us to do was to try to go through and review it in broad terms at this point.
And not to interject, but I think if we also go in chronological order, as opposed to jumping from section to section and just identifying sections or or specific language that is problematic for cer- certain people, I think that would be a lot easier as opposed to just kind of making more blanket statements that the, you know, the whole entire rule, rules rewrite is problematic. So I think if people can just, you know, be very specific as to, you know, what they see as problems in the rules right as we go through each section, I think that would be the most helpful.
Thank you, Counselor Baumgartner. Counselor Bordelain, did you wish to finish your statement? Counselor Bordelain? No, okay.
I'm here. I just was waiting. I, I asked to go in chronological order, and we were, but I, I think people are getting lost, so I was just concerned that that's what, that was my comment, so.
Thank you. Counselor Franco's been waiting, Counselor O'Bree.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't know what happened there. So we are going in chronological order, and we're going one topic at a time, one rule number, you know, we're now up to number eight. Rule number seven. And now we're discussing a number eleven. So my thought is on number eleven, I think what we should be bringing here is the communications of things that we would like to see at future council meetings, like things we would like to see on our agenda, or at times, somebody has brought up things that maybe they forgot to mention in communications, or they arrived late and they didn't have an opportunity. So they brought it up in new business or other business. I mean, yeah, other business. So I think it should be things that we would like to see on the agenda in the future, that maybe we could just bring it up in front of the whole council and say, hey, I'd like to have this on the agenda in the future, would it be possible? And then the whole council is aware of it, and maybe hear a little bit of an explanation. And that goes into something else in the, in coming up in the rules as well in relation to.
If I might?
Yes, Counselor O'Bree, and then Heed.
Yeah, we did get a little out of, out of sync here. Somehow we went from eleven up to the top one. I thought was with the communication reports and liaison reports, that was appropriate at that time. Then under other businesses, we would talk about events we've been at, whether it was council or personal, but it fed into what we wanted to share with the community. It, it seemed like it was better to separate them. And that was our thought behind that. And we did feel that there needed to be the liaison report because we didn't have an appropriate place for us to talk about things that we have attended on behalf of the council. So that was the reason for the, the suggested changes there.
Thank you. Counselor Heed. You're muted, Counselor Heed.
Thank you. Two things, let me respond to Counselor O'Bree first. If we do committee, if we do reports and then what is it, communications, then reports, and then we come back later and we talk about events, I, I think it, it will add an, an extra layer of confusion. Like I, I write everything down on one list, and if I have to read this list, and then I have to keep a separate list, we're all going to have to go through all nine of us again. So it seems to me that we should go through and try and have everybody speak as much as possible at one time, so we can then go on to the next person. It seems to me that would help the meeting flow. Just my, my suggestion. And then to respond to Counselor Franco's suggestion, maybe that's a, that would be a good idea, under other business lists, including referrals, or what other business might be. Because then, you know, if, if I want to make a referral for a plastics ordinance, for example, instead of going into executive session, then having to have the, the staff be waiting at the end to hear me say I want to make a referral, just doesn't necessarily make sense. So putting it right up front might be a good idea. So I, I could support that.
Yes, suggesting that under, where it says communication reports and liaison, that you would want to put in then, something that you wanted? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, no, no, no. I was saying, you were talking about rule number eight, the general thing, communication reports, liaison reports. And then you had also that you wanted to move, if you went to an event, like you went to a submarine, a subbase event, you'd wait until other business, then we'd have to go all through all nine counselors again. It seems to me you'd want your communications reports and events that you may have attended all in one spots, that one counselor speaks one time, and you don't have to go through it at the whole council a second time. And then when it came to number eleven, other business, Counselor Franco suggested that we allow the referrals to be spoken here, instead of where it normally would be at the end of the meeting. That's all. Is that clear?
Okay.
Do you understand the two?
Reason.
I'm sorry, sorry, go ahead.
The reason that we had thought about the change with the communication reports and liaison reports, we weren't, and we and Liaison Reports, we weren't, and we haven't really been giving them, anybody that's at a meeting on the part of the council, we haven't really been giving them the opportunity to give a full rebut. And we thought by putting it in there, it might be better. Under new, under the, this, that's more like, to me, it's like when I say, okay, we settled all the bulbs, or, you know, we're doing this or we're doing that. It isn't necessarily a report, it's more of a sharing. And it seemed like it should be divided. But this is open for discussion.
Okay. Counselor Franco.
So you, let me just get, I'm not quite understanding, maybe it's because you're breaking up or something. I, so you think in the beginning, our Communication Reports, Liaison Reports and like events we attended should be in the beginning of the meeting? And then at the very end, where it says Other Business, after we've taken care of all of our business for the night, right before we adjourn, that's where we should tell everybody, oh, um, I attended an event? Or, because it says here, suggestion to have counselors report any events they attended here. So you want to do that at the end of the meeting?
That's, that's how I'm interpreting it also.
So that's why I, I was trying to say, like, I think on number 11, I think of Other Business as saying, I'd like to make maybe a referral, or I'd like in the future this to happen. Or because I have no other time to really ask sometimes, you know, some other questions, maybe ask the town manager something that, maybe something that happened throughout the night, I might want to clarify with him. Or, or, you know, there's just other business, that's business. I don't think it's a communication.
Okay, I didn't feel like, I wasn't thinking that was at the end of, or when we're talking, because that's just, I see how you are interpreting it. We didn't mean that it had to, it, Other Business now is at the end of the, of our agenda, correct?
Right, it's right before adjournment.
Yeah, I, I don't, yeah. So this would all be part of the communication part of it, not at the end. But we didn't clarify that.
Like right now?
We were trying to make it.
We're in New Business, that's what we're dealing with right now, like our part of the meeting, like for tonight. And then after we're all done with this rules, we'll talk about Other Business and then we'll adjourn.
So, so Counselor O'Bree, are you, and Counselor Baumgartner, are you hearing the concerns from the other counselors as to Roman numeral 11 as it relates to Roman numeral 8?
I don't know how to answer.
So.
That we're down to six counselors now too, for the last five minutes?
Counselor Bordelain, yes, I made a note of that. Like, there's so much, lots of errant noise. So. Counselor O'Bree?
I think the mistake we'll make, I'm breaking up?
Yes, go ahead, you're good now.
All right, I think I had my notes on my iPad too close to the computer. I think that the committee needs to go back, we're working with the agenda. And we, when we have the agenda, normal, the clerk, you know, RTM meeting, the clerk of the council, town manager, those are all things that happen at the beginning of the meeting. And so we were suggesting that that New Business part of the beginning of the meeting, not the end. Do, do you follow me?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I am, the way it's written here, the Other Business does come at the end of the meeting. And from what was written here and was presented to us, that's where counselors would announce all the events that they had attended. And it was, as kind of Counselor Heed had spoken, it would be broken into almost two rounds, where counselors would go around once with their liaison reports. And then we would take care of all the business of the town, then we would get to Other Business and we'd go around again and say, oh, I went to this and I went to that thing, is how I'm interpreting what's written here. Now, I'm not sure if that was your intention or not.
No, I, I, I don't think that was our intention. Go ahead, Counselor O'Bree.
No, please, go ahead, I, I'm here when you're going to say, go ahead. We were trying to move it up. We were trying to make it part of all the announcements and so forth that we do. But maybe what we need to do is have Communication Reports, New Business, and we'll make the Liaison Report a separate, a separate line item. Maybe that would work better? Because we've never really highlighted the Liaison Reports.
I, I think it's, I think it's.
You know, we just say.
I'm sorry, I thought you were.
I'm done, I'm done.
I think it's good to have all the reports together because that's the important stuff. The, the other things, you know, what did we attend? And, you know, what parties did we go to and all that kind of stuff, is, is not as important as the reports that we're bringing back and sharing with our fellow counselors. So, so I, I agree with you that the Communications Reports, Liaison Reports should be, should be at the forefront. And then the, the other thing should be of a lesser status. But I, I'm willing to, you know, listen to what the council feels is their preference as to when they want to talk about events that they attended. And I am looking, okay, Counselor Franco.
So, are you saying with Other Business, you wanted to move that up into part of Section 8? I mean, because I don't think Other Business is where you discuss the event. And I'm not sure why there's like, um, the red that says suggestion to have counselors report any events they attend here. I'm not exactly sure how this is, how this is working.
What we were trying to, was the important items, the Communication, the Reports and the Liaison Reports, those are, I think, usually more timely to the meeting. Other Business is just that, Other Business. And, um, you know, it's, we could, we could, we'll, we'll work with this some more. God, I don't want any more meetings. I'm sorry. But I see, I see what you're saying, I'm not sure, but we will, we will work on that, definitely.
Right.
Because I can tell everybody's having a.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with putting another, like a, a line item in there for Liaison Reports to be separate. I think that's, you know, a good idea to hear the reporting back from people who have gone to all these meetings. I think that's a wonderful idea to hear the highlights. The Other Business, I think, I would currently not want to see any change there. I think it should be at the end of the meeting. And I think it, the part in red should be scribbled out and we should leave it as is right now. That's how I, I see it.
Okay. All right, so, anything else on? Rule 7, is there anything, any further discussion on Rule 7? Okay, then that takes us to Rule 8, Rules of Order. This is at the very bottom of page 4. And there's, there's quite a bit of change here. So if anyone has comments or one of the Chairman O'Bree or Counselor Baumgartner, if you wish to introduce any of this material to us? Or do you just want us to go ahead and state our piece?
I think it would be good if everybody just said how they feel about it. You know, obviously they've done their, yeah. That's good.
Very good.
Go for it.
Counselor Franco.
Um, so first, because this section is sort of large, can we just do it page by page, maybe? Can we work on one page at a time? My issue is.
Let me interrupt you for one second. We can try that, but it may not be as easy as that because some of the stuff may overlap. So I appreciate what you're saying, but, you know, it may tie into other things.
Right.
You have the floor.
So, one of my, my issue is with, um, Section B and Roman numeral 5. So this is here saying that the appeal, well, first of all, let me back up. So number 4, if somebody makes an appeal, you, you give your reason for the appeal and then the mayor gets to briefly state the ruling. And if there's, that there's no debate and no other member shall participate in the discussion. Okay, so then we move to 4. The appeal may be referred to the Rules Committee, which make recommendations to the Town Council for decision on a basis in order of precedence. Town Charter and the Rules of Council, Roberts Rules, and the council may be recessed for the purpose of the appeal being discussed by the Rules Committee. And no other business shall be in order until the Rules Committee has issued their recommendation on the ruling of the question of order. So the first thing is, for it to, the appeal may be referred to the Rules Committee, which may make a recommendation. So the referral, do you need three counselors? Do you need a majority of, of council's members? Because I have asked for an appeal of the mayor's decision to be brought to the Rules Committee and, I was told I had to make a referral outside of the council. And I need to get three counselors to be approving of this. So that's one issue. But this right here is saying that the meeting would basically stop and that we would recess. So then my, my next question is, that means the whole town council, or the council meeting will have to stop. They would have to have a meeting and we wouldn't be able to come back for another week. Because the Rules Committee cannot just create a meeting in the middle of a meeting to decide on a rule. Because this is what Counselor Heed had investigated in our first term. And he was told, no, you cannot do that, you have to post your meetings. So if you're, if the Rules Committee is not posting their meetings, then you're in violation of having a legal meeting. So we cannot just stop a meeting, have a Rules meeting, and then come back and, and resume our meeting. So there's a lot in number 5 that I, I have questions on. So can you explain how this would work?
Counselor Franco, would it be possible if we can tackle one question at a time?
I am only tackling one paragraph, that's all I'm talking about.
So we are, we are on, I'm going to interrupt, please. We are on Rule 8, Rules of Order. And Counselor Franco, her main question, the way I'm hearing it, is on Roman numeral 5, which is in reference to the Rules Committee convening. And I would just say that this sounds like what the RTM does when there is an appeal to the decision of the chair. The RTM recesses briefly, the Rules Committee can meet, they can decide, and they come back, at least that's the way it used to be. I'm not sure if that's still the way the RTM does it. But that's what came to my mind when I read 5 the way it is here. And I'm assuming that this is pulled directly from Roberts Rules, Chairman O'Bree and Counselor Baumgartner, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, yes.
So can you?
Rachel, you can have a.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry?
I was just going to ask you if you knew what, what section and everything from Roberts Rules for the rest of the council. Yeah, I know.
I, I don't know the exact section of Roberts Rules, but I, I know we pulled it directly from Roberts Rules.
That's, that's what I thought too. So I, I'm going to stop and I'll let you two, if you wish to speak to Counselor Franco's concerns.
If I might, I don't know what's happened in, well, I do have an idea of what had in the past. And what we're trying to do is make it a simpler process. Where if there is a, if there is an appeal, it can be referred, referred to the Rules Committee right at that time. And it's not, we didn't see anything where you had to have three people in order for that to happen. So this is really a clarification and making it simpler, I hope. And it was taken from Roberts Rules. So hopefully it would make it so that when there's something to talk about, the Rules Committee can, you know, the meeting can be adjourned. We probably should have a limit of time that it could be adjourned for. Would have to be something, would have to be expedited and come back with a recommendation.
And, and if I may, part of the reason why we established this section, you know, if you recall back in, you know, that crazy day we deliberated on the budget. It was an all-day deliberation, you know, at some points of the meeting, emotions ran high. And I think at one point, a point of order was called on one of our fellow members. And, you know, there, in, in some people's eye, there, it felt like there wasn't any recourse for that member to really appeal a point of order. And so, you know, I, I say that because even if there may be times in meetings where I may disagree with somebody on an issue, you better believe I'll defend their right to speak, you know, speak their mind. Because that's what, you know, democracy is about. And so I think in many respects, this is also provide some safeguards for folks who feel like they're, you know, maybe in the minority of a discussion. If, if they're really trying to make their point, that obviously they do so within the confines of the rules. But again, this provides, you know, some support for members if they feel, if there is a point of order called on them that, you know, if they feel that it was an, uh, maybe an unlawful point of order, that they have a, the opportunity to voice that.
Counselor Heed and then Franco.
The, the issue that we're talking about, Counselor Franco's correct. It was, we checked with Tom Hennig as to whether we could break in the middle of the meeting and hold a Rules Committee meeting. And that's not possible, you have to schedule a separate meeting. It has to be, it has to follow whatever the FOIA rules are at that time, 24 hours, 48 hours. I forget exactly, it has to be posted. And the, the RTM, I believe, operates under the same, or they operated, when I was on the RTM, under the same rules. So that's a, that's a FOIA thing, I think we're restricted by law.
I'll be, I, we'll be happy to look into that. I mean, I know that we took it from, we didn't create this.
Right.
So, uh, I would be happy to tell you where, where it's from. I think this makes a whole lot more sense as to how to handle something. But because if you, if you gotta, if, if you don't agree at that point, that's when it should be decided. I mean, if, and then, because then if you go on with what you're debating, it's probably not going to go very well. But I will, I will research that and come back to you after you go through my notes.
All right, thank you. Counselor Franco?
And also, my other question is, how is it referred to the Rules Committee? Is it just, if, let's just say, I make a motion? Or, you know, I, I make an appeal and the mayor presides over it and I, I don't like her answer, and I say I'd like to go to the Rules Committee? Do I need a second? Is that good enough? Do I need three people? Or do I need the majority of the council? Do I need three people, or do I need the majority of the council to allow that to go to the Rules Committee? Or is it just me asking alone, is that enough? Because this just says, "An appeal may be referred to the Rules Committee."
So, may I, I would like to respond. I think there is, there's a blurring of lines between what Roman numeral five is saying and what council calls a referral. Okay, so according to council rules, a referral right now requires multiple people to say, yes, we want to do that. I believe, and I could be wrong, and Chairman O'Bree and Counselor Baumgartner, you can, you can check this. But I think this is involving, and I'm trying to remember the correct language. I rise in opposition to the ruling of the chair. And one person would stand and say, "I rise in opposite." And if you were literally in a place, you would stand, and you'd say, "I rise in opposition to the ruling of the chair." At that point, that is an appeal, okay? You're appealing the decision of the chair. That is what used to be on the RTM. At that point, when that happened, at that point then, the Rules Committee would convene to decide the question that the other member had, had, had broached. And they would come back, and they would say, no, the, the decision of the chair sustained, or no, we agree that, you know, whatever it was. So there's a distinction between a referral, as, as we call it among our council. Like, I want to make a referral to, as Counselor Head was saying, to examine the Plastics ordinance. That's a referral. This is not that type of referral. This is appealing the decision of a chair, I believe. I could be mistaken, Counselor O'Bree and Counselor Baumgartner. I believe that's what this was referring to. It was appealing the decision of the chair.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if that's, that's something that Counselor Baumgartner and Chairman O'Bree would have to say. If that's where they were going with this, perhaps that's not what they were intending here. I'm not sure. That's-
Because section four, the one right before it, was if the, like, the mayor, Presiding Officer, has a ruling. And then the next one is the appeal of that ruling. If they would like to go to the Rules Committee, and that's what this is all about. And so, if there's an appeal, the mayor, you know, makes a ruling, and you would like to appeal that ruling, it may be referred to the Rules Committee, but it doesn't say how to get it to rules, other than it goes into where basically the council needs to adjourn. And then the Rules Committee has to take up this matter, and the whole meeting stops, and we can't go any further. So, there were two questions in this one paragraph, basically, is, how does it get referred? Just by me, like, if it was me, would I just say, I'd like this referred to the Rules Committee, and that's enough? Or I'd like to appeal the decision to the Rules Committee, and is that enough? Or does it have to be a second, or does it have to have anybody else involved? And then the second part is, because it's not defined here. And maybe the RTM has different rules, and I'm not even talking about theirs. But I'm talking about how it's not defined here, so I'm not sure. And then, the other problem I have is, and I've been, and I, Counselor Head had mentioned it before. These have, Rules Committee meetings have to be posted. Maybe John Burt knows more about that, because, I mean, they post every Rules Committee meeting that you guys have had. And if you don't have one, or you don't have a quorum, I mean, it has to be posted. I mean, these are things that the town has to keep track of. And they're one of those committees that definitely have to be posted. And I recall, and I have, over the past year, have made that, at our meetings, mentioned that numerous times, when somebody says, well, let's ask the Rule Committee. And I say, no, we can't. They cannot have a meeting because it hasn't been posted. And that's what I keep saying, you know, numerous times. So, could, I think we need to investigate that one. And I think it's a breach of FOI to have a meeting inside the meeting, so.
So this is what Chairman, or Chairman O'Bree said she was going to do, was to investigate it further. But again, there, a referral is different from rising to appeal the decision of the chair. And so we need to keep that in mind.
That's what I was going to say. You know, we're talking about point of order, you know? And we're getting off onto a lot of other things. This is just when somebody feels that they need to speak, and they say, "Point of order." And then they say what their, what their concern is. And at that point, most times, it's, it's, they speak, it's settled. But if, if it goes further, if there's others that's basically feeling the same way, that's when you go to, the, the appeal may be referred to the Rules Committee. Let's see. Yeah, council may be released. But once you understand, we didn't make up these paragraphs. We took them from the rules that we were reviewing, the standard of rules. So, but I will look into that and find out if, in the course of a meeting, if somebody asks for a point of order, and they want, you know, then it can't be settled at that point. And at that point, if it appears to need to go to the Rules Committee for an answer, we'll find out how that can be done.
Thank you.
No problem.
May I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I even echoed there.
So, I didn't see another hand. So, Counselor Franco, do you wish to speak further on this?
Yes. Where did you get these from, then? From out of Roberts Rules, or did you get them from somebody else's?
We were already referring to Roberts Rules. Let's see, the reference we were using, I believe.
Thanks.
And I think that the fact that it's in Roberts Rules, and the fact that another body in our town does this, this might be a question to run by the manager and see if the attorney can take a look at it and see what is appropriate, given our charter. And we can go from there. So, so the Rules Committee is going to look into Roman numeral five. There's plenty more in this, this rule. So, does anyone else have something they wish to speak to on this? This continues for several pages, guys. This is all the same, same rule. Counselor-
Mayor Granatowski?
Yes.
Yes, I was going to say, your interpretation of section, section five, and just more generally, the rule with respect to points of order, was pretty, was very spot on. You know, we weren't looking to make any changes as relates to referrals or what have you. It was strictly on the topic of points of order. So, that, that's what that section looked to get at. Creating an appeal, a more formalized appeals process, pulling language directly that is granted by Roberts Rules. To answer Counselor Franco's last question, much of the language throughout the rules changes is, was pulled from other rules that other town councils have across, you know, the country. So it's just looking at other rules as kind of a springboard to kind of, you know, serve as an inspiration for our efforts.
Thank you, Counselor Baumgartner. Counselor Head?
All right, let me just make sure I'm in the right spot. We're talking about rule number eight. Letter number B, like boy, and then specifically on Roman numeral five. But is that correct?
Well, that's the one that Chairman O'Bree is going to go and investigate further for us.
Okay, and then the, this entire section, letter B, all of this verbiage came out of Roberts Rules, or from other town council rules?
Chairman, or Chairman O'Bree?
It's a combination, but basically, we were referring to Roberts Rules. But there also might be some sections that we took from other rules that we reviewed of, of other organizations. But basically, we were relying on Roberts Rules. But, you know, it's hard to remember exactly. You know, I know the context, I know what we were trying to do, exactly where it came from. I couldn't-
You're, Counselor O'Bree is absolutely correct. You know, in most cases, all of these rules are really just, you know, a direct inspiration from Roberts Rules. So oftentimes, most, if, you know, 90% of the rules for most town councils are the same. So, that, that really, again, any, any addition to our rules is allowed via Roberts Rules, and comes from language that, you know, again, directly from Roberts Rules of Order.
If I might to, I think that, I think that motions and point of order in the minds of some of the people that are talking about this tonight got wrapped into each other. The first one, the point of order, we've hardly, hardly ever used it, that I can remember. Occasionally, somebody might say, "Point of order." We ask for a clarification, and we move on. I think it's more the, the section under motions that we run into more as, you know, I put a motion up, and nobody paid any attention to it. What have I got to do to get this motion up, da, 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 da? So, the point of order, to me, I will review this, and I will try to clarify things. But I, it was just a, it's just a way to go if we should need it for the Rules Committee. We haven't, in the past, I don't believe, on a point of order. But we certainly have on motions. Would you agree, Rachel?
Well, can I, can I just ask Counselor Head if, he had the floor, and I was letting you respond to Counselor Head? So, does that answer your concern, Counselor Head?
I, I just wanted clarification, because there are parts of this that just seem a little bit, like, it seems wordy. Take number two, "Any counselor may insist on enforcement of the council's rules of procedure. Any counselor may raise a point of order." Isn't that like the same thing? And I don't know that Roberts Rules would specifically say something like that. It just seems redundant.
Okay.
Okay, we have, I'm going to go to Counselor Bordelain next, because she's spoken less than Counselor Franco. Counselor Bordelain, then Franco.
Thank you. Once again, this is not a, you know, I was just a thought or a possible suggestion. Possibly, is, is it possible to, like, as we revisit this many nights, possibility to, like, write where you got the information from on the side, so that we can refer back to it, if at all? When you guys go back and look at this and look at your notes, maybe put like, you know, I know the new edition's out now, but, you know, maybe like, where you've gotten that particular item, so maybe it's easily to quick reference, if possible, on maybe not every item, but it would be helpful when trying to tackle such a big section, just to be able to. I know when we rewrite things at work, and we do the red and everything, we have to, like, put the source of, like, you know, what rule we're copying it from, and then that way, it will just make it go quicker, because Robert Rule of Order is a huge book, so it would, I, I mean, it's just a mere suggestion, not an insult, or just a thought process that would help. And if it did come from Roberts Rules, where, what paragraph, page, what addition, you know, on some sections, if possible, especially if it's something, I don't know, just a thought. Thank you.
Section 24, Appeal, on page 255 of the 11th, the 11th edition, is where it deals with appealing the decision of the chair. So that's 255 of the 11th edition, and the section is 24, and it deals with appealing the decision of the chair. And that's what this particular item is, in reference to, if I'm not mistaken, although I wasn't at your meeting, so I really can't say for sure. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. When I'm reading this, I understand it is a point of order. I have appealed the mayor's decision before on a ruling, because I thought it was incorrect. I have asked for the Rules Committee to review it, and I was told I need to make a referral to the Rules Committee, and have three supporting people. This was in the meeting, right at the time that it happened. So I don't understand what I'm, I'm, I mean, people are saying, I must be mixed up, and this isn't just a referral or a motion. This situation happened. This is why I'm trying to get clarification on it. I was told during the meeting, you need to now send an email to the whole council and get three people to, to make a referral, to ask us to go to the Rules Committee. This is stating something totally different. It's saying, the appeal may be, may be referred to the Rules Committee, which will make a recommendation. But the meeting has to stop. So this is like a lot in this one little paragraph. Like, we can't even continue a meeting. So if a situation comes up again, and I think something is incorrect, and I make the appeal to the mayor, she overrules me, and I want to go to the Rules Committee, we have to stop our meeting for the night. That's what this is saying.
I, I understand what it's saying, Rachel.
No, 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 it's a recess. It's a recess. It's not stopping the meeting. I'm sorry, I-
I'm going to interrupt, guys.
Everybody.
Please, please. This section is clearly needing clarification. And we've already said that the chairman, Chairman O'Bree, is going to get clarification on this for us. Okay, so we're not going to be doing anything else on this right now, because the chair and the Rules Committee, if necessary, will come back to us with their information and their explanation as to the source, which is Roberts Rules, and the, the question of the ability to have the Rules Committee convene during the middle of one of our other meetings. So, we, we know, in fact, that those are questions that need to be answered. And the chair has already said she's going to get the answers.
No, I fully understand that.
Okay, so then, we can, we can move on with the remainder of this section, because we know we're going to have the answer to those questions. Counselor Head?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I assume we go on to the next page with letter C and D. Is that correct?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
So, so, there's still Roman numeral six. But you can move it along to see if you'd like. If no one else objects, we can move on to letter C, precedents of motions. Go ahead, Counselor Head.
Right, the second one, "During a debate and discussion of a motion, the maker of a motion on the floor can interrupt a speaker to withdraw his or her motion, blah, blah, blah." According to Roberts Rules, you cannot interrupt a speaker, so I'm not certain where that would have came from. And I, I don't think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Do you have other things, Counselor Head, or can I move on?
That's it for now. I'm reading, I'm trying to read these real close to figure them out.
Okay, Counselor Franco?
If we go back to the B, number six, I think that goes in conjunction with number five, and that they're wrapped together, because that's also about reconvening. So after the recess, and they reconvene, and, and, let's just say that, let's just take, for example, they check it out, and FOI says, yeah, you have to post the meeting, you can't have it within the meeting. We might want to take the wording on that and figure it out on how to somehow maybe laid on the table for a certain period of time, or something like that, until we can come back to another meeting on that one, instead of recessing the whole meeting as well. And interrupt, and then when we go to the section C, the precedents of motions, I believe, I had also read that the interrupt a speaker to withdraw a- has been, I think I did read that you can interrupt a speaker to withdraw- has been, I think I did read that you can interrupt a speaker to withdraw a motion. But I think maybe we could figure that one out with reference points. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Baumgartner.
Ye- yes, if I may, and I, I didn't want to get to Counselor Franco before she went on because I, I think it is important just to stress that, you know, we can, if it is true that, because, you know, what she's saying, obviously with the FOI is very important. If we can't, you know, obviously if we recess and, you know, the rules cannot, you know, convene a meeting, then what I would suggest is, instead of recessing, we then just immediately put a vote to the council in terms of upholding the appeal, if that makes sense.
That's, that is what some of, if you, if you go into Roberts' rules and you read, then the body can just vote on that. So I, I think though, we need to, we need to wait and hear what the chair and your committee brings back to us as to what we can and cannot do. And if it comes back to us that we cannot do what is written here as the, in the draft as a suggestion, then we can bandy it about and figure out which way we want to go with it. But I think we, we should take that first step and find out what we can and cannot do. But thank you, Counselor Baumgartner, for, for that suggestion, and we will keep that in mind as an alternative, as an alternative to that section. Chairman O'Bree, did you want to add something?
No, I, as I said, we'll, we'll call a meeting of the Rules Committee and we will review the, these, and we will try to determine exactly where we got the information from. And I think the sidebar is a good suggestion as to where it was, and we'll try to find out if you can interrupt a meeting.
Very good. So we are on, oh, Counselor Bordelon, go ahead.
So with that, should we, do you guys want to continue, or do you want to wait, wait back before us, or? I, I mean, I'm up for it.
I'm kind of thinking, if, if I may.
Yes, please.
I'm kind of thinking maybe it would be simpler if we did go and find, if we had a meeting and attempted to construct this in a way that you can see where it came from and might make the conversation on it a whole lot easier.
I, I agree with you, Counselor O'Bree. I, I'm just saying, I mean, we could keep going at nine thirty. I mean, which I'm, you know me, I, I'll go for as long as you want, but I just feel like we keep going back to the same rationale of maybe letting you guys kind of give us a little bit more information if that was okay. You know, I don't know.
If, and, and I don't know, Madam Mayor, if you agree or not, but if, if anybody wants to send an email to me, we'll make it part of the, the minute, meeting minutes, and it would be helpful probably.
So every, everything we're doing here is part of the meeting minutes, but I would say if you have a particular concern, definitely get it in writing to the chair and Counselor Baumgartner and Counselor Parker. And that's what they have been asking from us from the very beginning. They've been almost pleading with us. Send your concerns, send your suggestions to them. That way, they have something to work with. So please, if you have these concerns, put them in writing and get them to, get them to definitely the chair, and I would say copy the council on it and just get it all out there so that we're all aware of what's happening. And then Chairman O'Bree can convene her group as, as she sees fit to tackle the questions that we've raised this evening. Counselor Franco.
Well, since it's been brought up, we're on page six of eleven, maybe half, we'll probably right at the halfway point, just about. So how are we going forward? I mean, there are, I think, a lot of other things that are going to come up that have, that will give the committee notes for their discussions. Do you want to do it all at once and put everything out there and then have them tackle it? Or are we just gonna stop here and have them come back to us again?
I, I did not suggest stopping here, and this is why I had asked at the beginning what the process was that you wanted to do, because I had thought it would be best to everyone give their concerns upfront, but it was the, it was the will of the council to go through page by page, so we are going through page by page. If the council would like to hold off on any further discussion this evening, if that's the will of the council, that's certainly fine. I've heard from one counselor that would like to hold off on any further. What is the consensus of the rest of the council? Would you like to continue until, we can continue till ten without any, any, any consensus or vote?
Let's keep going.
So.
Just have heard the Chairman O'Bree, who has asked for to take it back.
Okay, I, what I was asking was, we had one counselor who asked for a delay, and I was looking to get something from the rest of the council as to what you would like to do. Anyone have an opinion on this?
Can I just clarify? I was just being kind and asking because we kept referring back to, let me get back to you, let me look, you know, let's, you know, this complex document, which, you know, I was just suggesting, but I will go to ten, I'll go to eleven. I was just suggesting just to help. That way they have more notes on the side so that we could cross-reference it. That's all, that was a meaning that we had to stop, but I was asking if they wanted to, and if that would be helpful. That was my, but I'll go to ten, I'll go to eleven. So I'm willing to keep going.
Counselor Heed.
It might be interesting to get like an overview of decorum because there's, there's a lot in there. Where before I think was just three points in the original, in the rules we're operating under now, and in this one, you've drawn a whole bunch of stuff out. Might be interesting to hear that, but otherwise, I'm happy to, to wait till next time.
Okay. Counselor Baumgartner, what's your preference?
I think we could, we can keep on going.
Counselor O'Bree, what's your preference?
That's fine. Just don't ask me where I got it.
Counselor Franco, what's your preference?
I'll keep going.
Okay, so then we're moving on. So we are back on C, precedents of motions. And there's some new language there, and then there's a whole section on decorum. So does anyone have comments or questions on this section? My only thing is, there's a lot of he or she must rise and address the chair, and we don't really do that here. You do that, you know, and, and the General Assembly, probably you do that on the RTM, but we don't really do that here. So that's just like little language we can clean up. Anything of substance anybody wanted to talk about here? Counselor Franco.
So it states that when a question is before the council, the chair shall refer to the precedents of motions in accordance with Roberts' Rules of Order. What specifically are they speaking of there?
Can you give me the, the number, letter number combo, please?
Sure, it's C three.
C three. When a question is before the council, the chair shall refer to the precedents of motions in accordance with Roberts' Rules of Order. So, oh, boy. So, for example, if you try to move the question, that supersedes everything else. And the other, any other motion you might make can't be done because of that. So there's a whole section in Roberts' rules that tells you the order of precedence for different motions, and I believe that is what this is referencing.
I think this might be the, this is where I might like to throw in here because this issue had come up previously, and I think it might be a precedence of motions, is that before a motion is voted on, that there's time for a debate before all motions are voted on, and I'd like that, even though it's in Roberts' rules, I would like that to be notated in writing in our rules.
Where are you suggesting, suggesting that we put it?
Under section C three.
And what are you saying again, that you think we should be there?
That comments, questions, debate is allowed prior, I mean, it's in Roberts' rules that you are allowed to speak and ask questions or debate before all votes are taken. And when it comes to motions. And for example, if there's a motion on the floor with two amendments, and we vote on the, the second amendment, and then we go down to the first amendment because they have to be voted on in the proper order, and when we get down to the second one, we are supposed to have time to discuss and debate because that, you couldn't talk about the second motion while you're on, I mean, the first motion while you're on the second motion. So you're supposed to be able to have time to discuss now the first motion before voting. So I want this to be in writing because this is, this procedure has not actually happened at, at certain times, and I want to make sure that that's actually in our rules.
And then I will send you language on the prerogative of the chair to declare rules out of order and language on not allowing motions that negate the main motion. So I will send you an email with that information as well, Chairman O'Bree, to go along with the last comment.
Okay.
So let me just ask, so that's just your.
I'm sorry, Counselor Franco, did you wish to speak again?
Let me raise my hand.
Counselor Franco.
I don't know why I'm the only one that has to raise my hand, but.
Well, everybody does. I'm, I'm calling on people that have their hands up.
So just, and I'm trying not to take anything personal in this whole.
It's not personal. It's fine.
I'm trying not to take any of it personal.
Oh, you are.
Something that I'm trying not to take any of it personal.
Okay.
And when I put something out there saying I would like to make sure that there's a vote on some, that we're allowed to speak before a vote, and then it's quickly met with, and I will submit something to negate that. It's sort of, and then there's, there's things that are in here stating, you know, like we're trying to limit talk, or, or I've heard people say, and I mean, I wrote it down. Our meetings have been embarrassing because they're too long, and what people are saying, and that we need a tighter leash on speaking. I literally think that some of these things, and I'm trying not to take it personally, but it's being done to control people. And I just don't like some of this. I just have a bad feeling about how this is going. The next section on decorum and debate, these are in Roberts' rules. It's in our book. These things can be looked up, but instead, they wanted to spell them out very clear for everybody. These are things that if somebody is out of order, you call them out of order. Point of order, decorum. Point of order, decorum. I mean, I mean, it's, it's just literally like, I feel like for the past couple of years, we have not relied so much on our rules than as hardcore as now we're, we're trying to be. And I will say that there are rules there that I have never seen anybody ever use until just recently, and to silence people, and I just don't like this. I don't like the feel of this at all. I just, and I'm stating that straight out because decorum and debate, it's in Roberts' rules. It doesn't really need to be spelled out, some of these things. It's just too much.
So that takes us through, that's D, and it's one Roman numeral, one through nine, and then it leads us into debate. Any other comments on this? Counselor Heed.
I'm, I'm, I think there's a lot in the decorum. I'm not certain that we need to put it all in here. Some of it's kind of common sense. But if you get down to, for example, number eight and number nine, uh, number nine, it says you can't disturb the meeting, but whispering, walking across the floor. I, I don't even know what any of that means. I mean, it's just, it's more confusing than enlightening, if that makes sense. Just, it doesn't help, in, in my opinion. But I'd be happy to hear what you have to say about it from the Rules Committee.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in and then I'll yield to Chairman O'Bree. These are some of the things I think that I mentioned earlier about rising to speak and so forth that can be cleaned up, but I, I will yield to Chairman O'Bree and Counselor Baumgartner to defend their, their work. Would either of you like to speak?
I, I'd be happy to speak, and then perhaps Counselor Baumgartner will also. This is probably more because of me. I felt that it needed to be spelt out because I felt that there were abuses at our meetings, and I thought that if we had this, it might help things to go a little smoother. Yeah, you know, we get pretty passionate about some things, myself included. I mean, what I'm doing, when we were doing this, we were talking to ourselves and each other as we were doing this. And, you know, if you look at these things and you honestly say to yourself, have I gone by this? All of us have to say no. I, I feel, and I, that's why I felt it needed to be spelt out a little clearer so that we would have better meetings. That, that was what, it's not, it's not personal to any one person. As I said, I even, I have abused things. And so maybe I'm looking at myself, but I don't think I'm alone. So I felt this would just make for better meetings, more productive meetings, and less trying to ram something down by saying it over and over and over again. And so that's why we approached this.
Thank you, Chair. Counselor Baumgartner, did you wish to speak to the inclusion of this section on decorum and debate?
Uh, sure. To answer Counselor Heed's question, I think the section on like whispering, walking around, just basically, you know, obviously, once we resume having meetings in person, that we don't disturb, you know, other counselors while the meeting is underway by, you know, obviously whispering, you know, and doing other activities that may be considered a disturbance. Does that answer your question, Counselor Heed?
Okay, so Chairman O'Bree and Counselor Baumgartner have spoken. I have three counselors who wish to speak. We have Counselor Bordelon, Franco, and Heed. Counselor Bordelon? She dropped. I'm sure she'll be back in. Let's go to Counselor Franco, and then we'll come back to Counselor Bordelon. For, yes.
We only have five members present.
Right, we can't vote on anything. We have a quorum, but we can't vote on anything at this point, and we're not gonna, we're not anywhere near voting yet. So what I would say is, let's go on to Counselor Franco and Heed, and then we'll yield back to Counselor Bordelon when she's available.
So Roman numeral seven, reading from reports, quotations, et cetera, only without objection or with permission. If any member objects, a member has no right to read from or have the secretary read from any paper or book as part of his or her speech without permission of the members. I don't, I, how does this help anything? I don't even know what this is in reference to. I don't even know what this is in reference to, or why it's here.
I'm sorry, where are you?
I'm in section decorum of debate, section D, Roman numeral, I guess, seven. On page seven. I mean, honestly, if I bring, I bring minutes from another meeting and I want to read something, I have to have the permission of the council to, to mention something or bring out a quote, or even to mention a quote from somebody, or reading from a report. I, I just don't understand this, how this is helpful. I don't know why we're putting it in here. If I, if I write a letter, or if I, you know, at numerous times, I've written something, I've prepared something, and if I send it to the council beforehand, do I have to get a permission to be able to read it at the council? I mean, this, I just don't even know what this means, or why it's in here.
You know, not too long ago, we had a lot of discussion about whether we're gonna be read or not read.
I didn't.
And it was determined, can't hear me?
I couldn't hear you. You broke up.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't know why my computer's not great tonight, but not too long ago, we had a situation where we were debating whether a certain part of our agenda should be read or not. You know, and we determined that how we were gonna read it. You know, because we were putting out amounts, and we felt it wasn't correct to put out the amount. It was just correct to thank the people for their donation. So I mean, we had a discussion about it and worked it out, and it was fine. And I think that's probably, you know, what this represents.
But this is located in decorum in debate. This has nothing to do with that part of our meetings. This is like when we do debate. Like if we are, like right now, we're in debate. I can't pull out, like, another book and read from it, like, they've read from Roberts' rules tonight without my, without the council's permission to do so. That's basically what it's saying.
Okay.
I mean, I don't understand how it helps, and that's why I'm saying like, like, the decorum in debate, and I appreciate everything you guys have done, I truly do. And I know it's been a lot of work, so don't take this.
Nope.
Please don't. But decorum in debate, I just take it as it's redundant, it's already in Roberts' rules, and we go by Roberts' rules. And what's supposed to be in our rules is something that's a deviation away from Roberts' rules. Like how we're gonna do something different. This is basically Roberts' rules and just trying to plan it right inside our thing, just to say, hey, we're reminding you of these, some of these rules. But some of them don't even pertain to us, and I don't even know why they're here. Like, reading from reports, quotations, without, only without objection or with permission, just.
I think this is, if you read it, it says, any paper or book is part of his or her speech without permission of the members. So you're saying to the members, you know, I'd like to read an article to you that I think adds to the discussion.
Right, it says reports or quotations. I can't even like reference somebody else's quote, or read from Roberts' rules.
I'm gonna proceed here for a second. This is why you often will hear, without objection, I'd like to, whatever. And then you would go ahead and start your reading, and then if someone objected, be like, no, I object. And then at that point, you would have to stop reading it. I think it was, in general, something like this would be put in to avoid a filibuster, is why you would throw something into the rules. I just want to digress for one second. Counsel Heed, yes, well, Counsel Bordelon is back, so everything is moot right now. But yes, you were correct. I was checking that, the number of votes, and you were correct. But we are at six again, so we're set. She was only gone for like a minute, so we're all set, so I'm done. And let's see, I, I said we would go back to Counsel Bordelon because we had, her call dropped. So Counsel Bordelon, did you wish to speak? You're muted?
So first, I'm just gonna say, ask for patience because I'm having to use my phone. I do not have a raised hand on here, so I'm gonna have to raise my hand like this. As Counsel O'Bree is using, my computer is not letting me back onto Zoom. And so I apologize, it kicked me off, and I've tried to get back on, so I only have this means the second, so. Thank you. And I was just speaking, I believe, to the, the same things, I was just kind of agreeing with other counselors that have spoken and stated that it's, you know, basically just restating under that section. Under decorum, just basically, I don't know that it's needed to have, you know, that extensive. I, I think at that point, when you start to write all that, we might as well just hand everybody a Roberts' rules book for, you know, once you're elected, and make sure they have one, and just bring it to every meeting. I mean, it can be referenced, so I don't, I think it seems to be a little excessive. Thank you.
And Counsel Heed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So section, what section are we in? It's decorum, but the number six. This one, I'd like to ask for a clarification, refraining from speaking against one's motion. So the maker of the motion, while he or she can vote against it, is not allowed to speak against his or her own motion. And if he or she changes his or her mind, you might just say they. I think that's accepted now. While the motion is pending, can affect and advise members by asking permission to withdraw the motion. This one has always confused me. I mean, if, if we're going through the agenda items in the, in the council packet, and I make a motion to fund the bridge, the Stonington Bridge, for example, just to take a real life example. So I make the motion, but then I turn around and vote against it. So if I make the motion, I can't speak. Is that considered my motion because it's part of the agenda? Or is the motion somewhere else? Like, I, I want to make a motion to amend something, then I don't speak against the amendment. Like, to me, it's just confusing which one is my motion and which one is like the council motion.
Okay, I see what you're at. Let me, let me restate, and you tell me if this is what you're talking about. So say, for example, in going through the course of our normal agenda, your item happens to be, we shall use plastic everything one time only and throw it out. And you have to read that, and you have to, you have to make that motion, you have to move that question, right? He's asking if that becomes his motion, and then he can no longer speak against it. Is that what you're asking, Counsel Heed?
That's, that's, well, yeah, so that would be part A. Part B is, because I think what it should mean is, so anybody can make a motion, then I make an amendment to the motion. So that amendment is really, that's my motion. The other motion is just a council motion. So I think that there's a difference there, but I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if it's a difference according to Roberts' rules.
So we need clarity on that? Is that what you're, you're asking for clarity from the committee?
Yes, ma'am.
And Counsel O'Bree, and Counsel, our Chairman O'Bree, and Counsel Baumgartner, are you clear on the, the confusion that Counsel, or Counsel Heed is having on this?
Yeah, I'm clear on it.
All right, very good. Counsel Franco.
So just like you had mentioned on that one, this is in Roberts' rules about not speaking against your motion. Well, like I've said, we don't usually implement half of the rules. I mean, we usually only put in the things that we would like to change from Roberts' rules. So this is not something that we've ever held anybody accountable for. Are we gonna, if it's in here, are we gonna hold you accountable for that? I, that's what I'm, I don't understand, with so many different changes in here, are we gonna actually hold everybody accountable to all of these? Or are they just gonna be held accountable at certain, certain times? And why are we going so in depth? That's what I don't understand.
Why are we what?
Why are we going so in-depth?
I thought that's what we were asked to do. You know, they asked us to, to review and, you know, make changes as we felt they were needed. And like with the quorum, as I said, I, I thought it was definitely needed. So it's just kind of a reminder, you know? You have it there when you're having a meeting, and if something's said, you've got this to refer to. But you know, a, a good meeting does have rules to go by, and it makes it a whole lot easier to move forward.
I fully agree and understand with that. But like, some of this, I just think is redundant because it says we go by Roberts' rules of order. And if it's in the Roberts' rules of order book, I don't know why we have to just take it and copy it again here to say, here's your reminder. Usually, the things that I've noticed in here are things that deviate from Roberts' rules, because not everything in Roberts' rules fits us.
I think, though, that we've been told that we have to run our meetings by Roberts' rules as a guide.
That's why it says in here.
Can you guys, one at a time, please, first? Counsel Franco, why don't you finish, then we'll let Chairman O'Bree address your remarks.
I would just like to respectfully say, we're having sort of a discussion about this. And when other people are having a discussion, they have, it's been allowed. But when I'm doing it, I'm like supposed to raise my hand. I don't understand this. So in the very beginning, it states that we would go by, and you actually changed the wording on it, where it would say, I'm sorry, let me find where it says that. On page five, it states in here that you would use the latest edition of Roberts' rules of order, and that shall govern the council in all cases in which they are applicable, provided they do not conflict with these rules. The town charter, ordinances, or applicable state statutes. So Roberts' rules is our foundation. What we're putting in here are things that are basically deviations, like we're, we're deviating a little bit away from, and we want to clarify. It's not to just repost everything in Roberts' rules in here to say, you've broken the rules before, and now we're putting it in here so you can see it. And I, I just don't think that's necessary. And like I'm saying, like, if you're gonna put in here that refraining from speaking against one's, one own motion, or that if you read from a report, or you quote something, you have to have the permission of the council, or people can't whisper or, or walk around in the meeting rooms, or I just think this is a little much. That's just my perspective. I think it's a little much. I don't think it's necessary, and I don't know. I, for me, my second, my opinion is, for section D, decorum and debate, you could basically say we refer to Roberts' rules, and basically take out the whole thing, and not put any of that wording in there, because I don't think it's necessary.
And they're decorum.
That's my opinion. I don't think section D needs to be in there, other than just simply saying decorum is followed by Roberts' rules. That's me, though.
That's all right. That one I don't agree with you on, but I'll still review it again.
Okay. Counselor Baumgartner, did you wish to address anything that's been raised about the rules as far as the decorum issues?
Not particularly, but, you know, I definitely hear Counsel Franco's concerns, and, you know, maybe best to, you know, continue some of these discussions offline, but, you know, again, definitely hear where she's coming, coming from.
Okay, so that's an item that you all can discuss. Let's see, so we, we have four minutes. So we are on to E, debate. Any comments or questions on this? Okay, then, 9:57, and we're talking about limits of debate. We are on item F right now, and this is where we are hitting the limits of debate with the time limits. So if anybody wants in three minutes or less to speak on this, and then we can vote if we wish to continue. Counsel Heed, and then Frank.
Counsel Franco was first already. She had her hands up.
Okay, Counsel Franco, then Heed.
So as I've stated before, I'm completely against the three minutes, and and that it states in here, counselors are limited to three minutes each time they speak on a question. After each counselor has spoken, if a counselor has a second question, that counselor is allowed three minutes, and then yield the floor to another counselor. So is there a limit on this? Am I, is there a limit on how many times? So if I'm allowed to speak for three minutes, and nobody else wants to speak, can I continue? Or do I have to raise my hand again? I don't understand, like, how this works. Or is it allowed three, three minutes? Because I will say, if you're, if you wrote in here that we're allowed three, three minutes, or is it three, and then in parentheses, three, meaning you just wrote the number to understand that the word three equals three. I don't, I don't know what it means. And let me, and then I'll continue what I have to say.
Let, why don't you go ahead and finish, then she can address when.
Well, I need that answer first.
Okay.
Or Chairman O'Bree.
Each time you speak, it would be three minutes. Then you'd go on to other counselors that might wish to speak, then you could speak again. The idea is to try to keep it so that it's going around the council, not staying necessarily with one counselor that's trying to, in passion or whatever, get their point across. So it's three, go to anybody else, three again, go on. But you can, you know, and if, then you might ask if you could, since nobody else has asked to speak, may I speak again? But we're just asking that we try to keep it in that, that three minutes each time.
Okay, so when it says three, written out as three, and then it has parentheses, three minutes, it doesn't mean I'm only allowed to speak three times for three minutes each.
No, it does not.
I see. So there's no maximum amount of time that I can, I could speak. There's not, like, there's no, like, minimal, I'm sorry, there's no minimum.
You get, each time you speak, it's three minutes.
Right, but successfully, okay.
You can go, as your turn comes again, you can speak again for three minutes.
Understood. So once again, I will say, I don't agree with the three minutes. Our community members are allowed to speak for five when they come to speak to us, and we're being limited to three. I understand the sharing, and I get that. But sometimes some people have some in-depth things that they'd like to say. It doesn't always happen all the time. I just don't see, I mean, there have been some heated meetings that we've been in. And I understand that, but I, I just don't think as an elected official, we need to put this on. And I think this is trying to muzzle people, and I don't like that, that, I don't like it at all. Thank you.
Okay.
Counsel Heed.
Thanks. Actually, yeah, I just wanted, first of all, to concur, the original minutes were written, like, limits of debate, number five, number, letter E, number three, were written as five minutes. You write out five, then you put five in parentheses, so it's not a, I just wanted to confirm with everyone that that's my reading of it as well. But my thinking, like, in, in the rules previous to this, it was written in such a way that you could ask one question, and then it would have to go around the room. So no single counselor could dominate the entire meeting. And putting a time limit on it, I, I just, I have a question about that. Because somewhat, somebody needs to time how much the person is speaking, and does that time include the answer to the question? Is it, you know, there, there, I think would be better to say, if you want to make a rule, someone can ask three questions. Is it, you know, there, I think would be better to say, if you want to make a rule, someone can ask three questions or something to that effect. And then it can go on to the next one. The problem is, you know, sometimes you don't think of your questions till you get into it. And it, I think our idea originally was to allow more of a conversational situation where. A counselor may have a question, but it could lead to two or three or four or five more questions. So to limit them to just ask one question. Kind of, you know, by the time the, the other eight counselors go through the question, you get back to that other counselor. Whose question they've totally lost the whole train of thought and they don't know what they were thinking before. You know, you have to write down everything. It just, it becomes a little bit haphazard. So just a caution when you try and limit the time. As a way to get around that, to allow for multiple questions, you can run into a similar situation where nobody's timing it. Or somebody feels like, well, I got timed at five minutes, but I timed this other person, they got five and a half, you know. So, you know, it's, I think this is one of those things where we just have to agree. How we're going to run it. And so we put a general rule out there, but we have to concede that, you know, I need to self-police myself. If I can't ask seventeen questions, even if I can get them into three minutes. And not recognize that I may be dominating the meeting or something to that effect. I'm not sure what the purpose of the time limit is. So in that sense, you know, I just think we need to think a little bit more about this, that's all.
Okay, and at this point it is ten oh three. So before we continue. I want to know if you want to keep going, because if we want to keep going, I need consensus to do so. We are not taking up any new items. We are continuing this item, but I understand that some of you may wish to not continue at this point. So what's the consensus of the council? Do you wish to go on or I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
If I might.
Counselor Obrey.
I think we've hit most of the things that you want us to go back and research and, and give more explanation of, or maybe give more thought to. Because the only thing left really is the. Public Safety. Committee, so. I think we've pretty much. Covered all the red lines.
I do have something else, so there is something else that I wanted to add. But at this point, I'm not going to raise it until I know for sure that the council wishes to continue. So I see hands, so I'm assuming that means you guys want to continue. So Council Board lawn?
So we'll, I'm fine either way, but we'll start back at this item where we are right now when we come back to it.
That's entirely up to you. We can continue right now and work through it. Or if you all wish to adjourn, someone can make that motion. That's what I'm asking everybody right now, what your preferences.
I just wanted to make it noted because this item, a couple of people got to speak on it. And so where we're at currently, we'd have to come back to. Couple counselors spoke and then we hit our time limit, so I just didn't have a chance to speak to that. So I just wanted to make sure if we do adjourn that we're coming back to this very item. Thank you.
Do you speak on it now?
I wish to go either. No, it's fine because we already moved on. So I don't mind keep going or ending whatever everybody wants. I can go either way.
Okay, all right, so, so I see two hands and I don't know whose was up first, so you two can duke it out. Who raised their hand first? Counselor Heed or Counselor Franco?
I believe it was Counselor Franco, but I'll just say that I'm okay continuing. I think we're almost done with this part.
Okay, Counselor Franco.
I'd like to continue, but I would like a ten minute break. We've been going at it for three and a half hours without a break. So if we could just get like ten minutes would be nice.
I agree with that one.
How about five? Let's concede and do five minutes because it is five after ten already. Five minute recess. And we were discussing. The three minute limit, I believe. So. In one hand. Counselor Franco, go ahead.
That hand was left up before. I think she forgot to take it down.
Yeah, I will lower my hand.
Okay. Let's see. So then that leaves us with, this is on page eight now, yielding the floor. Reconsideration. And then it goes into committees and referrals. So does anyone have comments on any of this content? I'm going to jump over to nine, on page nine. This is actually rule number nine, committees and referrals. And. G. And this is part of what we've talked about several times in the past. And I'm not sure if it's having to do with referrals to the council. I would just like it to say, before a referral is granted by the mayor at a council meeting, the requester shall provide a written summary to the council and the manager. It's, and I've talked about this before, where it's hard to, to know what the intent is if we don't have it written and in front of us. And I think it would be beneficial for the whole council to be able to read in words what your intention is. And again, I stress that I think it should be your words. So if you are making the referral. You need to put your words down and express that to your fellow counselors. So that we are all very clear of what your intention is. So I would just like under G, just change the word when to before. That way we have the written. Record of the referral, please.
Okay.
I heard someone, but I don't know who that was. I'm sorry. Counselor Board lawn?
That wasn't me speaking, but I did raise my hand. Sometimes there might be, can a referral be made in a, in a meeting where it might be just organic in the sense that it comes from the discussion? So. They might not allow for that. And I would think that you would want to hold up waiting for that just because that seems. I don't know, just not everything's going to have a pre-planned written referral. For deliberation. Because based on a meeting, you could say, you know, I'd like to make a referral. And it might not be written out at that moment. But I don't know, I just, I would like some more clarification about that, I guess, is. Not everything is, and that's the other thing, that's back to that point of the three minute limitation. Just like our agendas are never set, always, you know, everything's ever evolving and sometimes, you know, discussion. Or at least I'll speak for myself, discussion comes from sometimes what other counselors have said that. You know, I could write down a bunch of things, think I have nothing to comment on there, but Counselor X or Y could say. You know, I think this and you like start thinking for a minute like, wow, that's pretty interesting and didn't look at it that way. Now it draws more questions. That's like proper deliberation and discussion that is very organic and there's not a lot of preparation with that. That happens by the discussion without limitation and it's just part of the process. So I don't know, I just, in reference to the three minutes and then, you know, the referral being fully written out beforehand. But that always happened that way. And the more that we set the stage and, you know, have a dress rehearsal, I just, I don't know, I just don't think it really. It's truly what we were elected to do. I think it's, you know, meant to be more natural and ever evolving, so. That's just, those are my opinions or thoughts. Thanks.
So I would add that the last line of that section says the mayor shall have the discretion to waive the written summary. So I think that would address your concern that if there's something that comes up that it seems like we're all. You know, fully behind and we want to move ahead with, then, you know, that could be, it could be waived. But if it's something that. You know, a couple of people are interested in, then I think we do need to get the exact language down. But my only, my only change on this was asking for before rather than when.
Yeah.
Franco.
I commented.
Oh, please. Counselor Franco, can she comment to that?
Can you just tell me exactly where you are? That's what I need to know.
We're on page nine of eleven. And this is. G. Under rule nine, rule nine, committees and referrals, G. On page nine.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know we had changed the page. Thank you.
Okay, can Counselor Board lawn respond before you take your turn?
Sure.
Counselor Board lawn?
No, well, again, I. Leaving it to the discretion is, I feel people could be boxed out. That's, you know. I don't think it's really deliberate. I think it should be. If it's not spelled out that day and the counselor comes before and says, you know, even though it's not. Something I think. Waiting to ask for, I don't know, just. I think every counselor got elected because they have an opinion or a thought. And that's the proper way. I think we are nine counselors all equally elected. To do the same job. And I think that no matter what a counselor is interested in. I think they should have a right to make the referral and if that has to be typed up later. Some would say the discretion of, I don't know, I think it leaves it, I think it still leaves it too. Too broad there. I think anybody should be able to come forward with referral at any point in time. And. I bet. I think that's just, just fair, to be honest. So I, I don't know, I have questions about that G altogether. That's it. Thank you.
Counselor Heed.
Just to clarify, did Counselor Franco still have another question or the only question she had was the, where we're speaking?
She lowered her hand. Counselor Franco?
I have a question on, I have a statement I want to make on F. So if we want to finish G. My F, I guess also pertains to G. So go ahead, Counselor Heed, and I'll wait my turn.
For G, I think there needs to be a formalized process just so that nobody gets special treatment or, or. Or miscommunications aren't happening. We can, we all have great, you know, ideas, organic ideas during meetings and all that. And I think, you know, if we verbalize that, that's great. But I think, you know, it needs to be written down so that it's clear, it's concise, it's been thought over. Before it's submitted to the rest of the councils that nobody has any questions. What exactly are we doing? Why are we adding this committee? Why are we going to look at this question? Why are we asking for this information? I think it needs to be clear and concise.
That's Franco.
That's, that's number G, that's G under rule ten.
Under rule nine.
Oh, under rule nine. I'm reading it, trying to think, what is he talking about? Sorry about that.
Rule nine committees and referrals, letter G.
I'm getting tired of making mistakes.
Counselor Franco.
So. In reference to that, I, for G, I don't have a problem. It says when a referral is granted by the mayor at a council meeting. The quester shall provide a brief written summary of the referral's intent to the council and town manager. And this is, this is basically if a referral is being made at the council meeting. It could be like organic in nature, but maybe after the meeting is over, we could just send over the referral, like something in writing over to you. I don't have a problem with that. Like once the meeting's over or if I came prepared ahead of time, I don't have a problem with that. What? That goes into is F. And is upon the request of three counselors, a mayor shall refer matters to a standing committee. Re-referral shall be, shall be vote by council. So. Which goes into play with G as well, but my question. I have a problem with F as a whole. As this also goes into play on page ten. Where it states. In section. J. So this is my question. So this is referrals to other committees. So like if I were at the town council meeting and I want to make a referral to the committee, the whole. I need three counselors to say, or two others, including myself, to say, yeah, I'll back you on that. So it could get on the agenda. This is where I, where I agree that we're all elected officials. And I don't think we should have to put it in writing, send it out to the whole council. And get two other people to support that for it to get on the cow agenda. Simply because we're elected officials. And let's just say it's something for. Simply because we're elected officials. And let's just say it's something for obolists. Something that nobody's gonna agree on. Very quickly, we're gonna have a, a discussion, and quickly, there, people would vote on it to say, we're not going forward with this. But if it's sent in an email, then it raises a lot of other questions. And then some people who say, well, I'm not gonna support this, so I don't even want to hear what she has to say about it. They won't even listen to what has to be said about it. That's what I don't, I don't agree with. And then I gotta put my whole debate almost into an email to ask for it to just have a discussion at a council meeting. I don't think I should have to put out my full debate onto an email, trying to get support so that we could just have a discussion about it. Which goes into on page 10, where it says, "Agenda items for the COW can be requested by a counselor or the town manager. Counselors should submit their agenda request to the mayor in writing seven days prior to the meeting. The mayor and the town manager will meet and decide what items are placed on a COW meeting agendas. Action on or any other items shall require suspension of rules and be in accordance with FOIA." So here in one section, it's saying, I don't have to have three referral, like, the three referrals to make it get onto an agenda item. But over in F, under section nine here, it says, "I need three people to get something on the agenda at the COW." So it's complete conflict. And I personally don't think, if I want something to come to the agenda item, to have just a discussion, I don't think I need to ha, should have to have two other people back me on that. So I don't think, I think section F should be scratched. In that maybe just section J on the next page, that states, you could send it seven days in advance to the mayor and/or and the mayor, and the will decide how it goes, gets on the agenda. Thanks.
So, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna be devil's advocate here, okay? And say that if we do that, I preface it by saying, I've been trying to follow the rules that are in place, okay? So the rules in place are requiring three. I've been trying to stay, stand by them. So devil's advocate now. So say that a counselor sends something to the town manager, the town manager, the mayor meet, and then the town manager and the mayor decide what gets put on the agenda. So what if your item doesn't get put on the agenda? This is where having two other people backing you, I think, would be helpful, right? Because if you, if, I'm not saying I love the process in place, trust me, but the argument for that other process, which we did not write, we kind of, it fell into our lap from the prior councils. I, I believe that's what happened. It, it's, it's kind of a way to protect you, right? Because what if your item doesn't get put on? You know what I mean? If we have the process where it's you, it's two other counselors, it's in writing, then it's gonna be on the agenda. Right? So, so look at that side of it as well. For example, right now, we are so backlog with items that are, you know, that we should have up, but because of everything that's been going on, you know, like tonight was pretty much all economic development, right? And that's great. But we are backlog on items that we're ready to go on, but we just don't have time to do them. So, so I, I would hate for things to get lost in the shuffle. Right? I, I, I think we need a process, whether it be the three, whether it be this, as Counselor Heath said about the other item, we definitely need a written process. And if, if the council chooses something other than what exists now, that's fine, but I want, I want a written process so that we're all clear on what that process is and on how things should progress. Counselor Bordelone?
Thank you. I mean, I think it would be applicable, too, if we have so much stuff that's, we're behind on. Couldn't the rules address the, the option to throw in a force meeting and to shorten the other meetings, so they're not so long? Not saying every month, but where needed, so that we can get to these items. Also, I don't see how that protection really is in play. I think just from my own line of work, or any, any work I've done, you know, sending out the email is pretty much, there's a trail there, so. Once that is submitted to the mayor, right, understanding there's time restraints, I do feel like it's problematic. Not everybody checks their email every day. Sometimes some people will send stuff during the day. Some people work places where they can't check government email at work. You know, so, yeah, I mean, or they're sometimes attached to rolling emails, and you're like, need three responses, and it's not even, it's just a quick little synopsis. I also think that debate and stuff should be before the public eye. I think it's important for the public to know counselors are bringing up items. So if, you know, Joey wants to paint the, the street purple on Fridays and red on Mondays, and that's Joey's suggestion, and then he get the, she or she doesn't get the backing of, of the, and two other counselor members who agree with those colorations and road paintings, I don't feel that that should be lost in email and not brought forward. Be, just because nine people and two counselors don't agree to move that forward to make it an agenda item, doesn't mean that that person's item, item to paint the street purple and yellow or red is not a great idea. And I think it's important that constituents, since we were elected by the people to, to serve the people in the town, that they understand that there are things that have been asked that didn't get moved, right? I mean, I think that's fair. And so when it's done in email, it's never presented publicly. There's no like, uh, Joey submitted these two items, and we couldn't get two counselors with support. It's not part of any record. It's not part of anything. It's part of a, an email that just is left there, and, and then you don't get the response, and it doesn't move anywhere. I think it's important that, as Counselor Franco stated, that we were elected, and we might not all agree with our opinions, but I feel it's important that everybody's voice is heard. And I think if someone has a great idea, or they feel it's a great idea, let it go forward. And then let it go for discussion, and it might not move. It might be like some quick thing of validation that, um, you know, I think any counselor should have the right to write some forward and have probable cause to do such. That's, you know, why we're here. And just like this, I mean, how did this become debate, right? Few people figured out that they wanted to do a rule change, and it had to have a couple of opinion, you know, people. But I, you know, and it had to have a couple people, but if one person wanted to talk about a rule change, they shouldn't have to get the other two counselors forward. They should have just said, you know, I'd like to discuss a possible rule change, and bring that up publicly before the council, and not, not have to have it sit in an email, and not ever any light and attention to it. Because I think that's work that counselors are doing. There are things that have come forward that haven't gotten three things, or two other counselors, and it doesn't, doesn't go anywhere. And I think that's, I don't know, just feels like it's a waste of time, you know? I think it could be a lot easier, much more streamlined. I think under one of the businesses that we have on there, you could submit your writing, and under there, you could say, submitted, you know, this request, and you could bring it up under the, under the item, and then it, then that way, it's publicly documented. The letter was submitted, counselors are aware, and then it's a proper time, it can come before to be discussed. I think it's, I think it's great to have that stuff all for the record. I think it would also help with some of the issues that some people have identified the council having with communication and frustrations. I think, you know, it would solve problems, and I, that's a fair process, and I think it would open up a lot of transparency and deliberation that happens before the community at large. So I, I don't think, some people will say, oh, I didn't even see it. I haven't been on my email for a week. Well, in this case, you wouldn't have to worry about seeing it, because you submit it, and it's publicly addressed, and it's done. And I think that, that's great. I think in a perfect world, if we were paid counselors, and this was my full-time job, and I was checking this like I was being paid all day, it would be different, but we're not. And it is hard to keep up with new business and items when, with the setup that we do have. And so I, I think it would be helpful to have that option available. So, thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner, did you have your hand up?
Uh, no, I do not.
Thank you. We have Franco and Heath, and I don't know who was up first, so. I think he's referring to you, Counselor Franco. He's pointing, a great watch style.
We have had the, um, we have had quicks as well. I understand there's a lot, I mean, um, maybe on a backlog, I understand that. But if I want to make a referral, even to a committee, I have to get two other counselors to support me. I have asked for a rule to be reviewed, just a rule to be reviewed by the rules committee. I have asked at a council meeting, I could not get two other people to support me. I have asked in email a couple times, I could not get counselors to support me. All I wanted was a rule to be reviewed, so I could get a fundamental understanding of it. And I could not get counselors to support it. This is a problem. This is a major problem. If I have a referral to the COW, you know what? I, I think there's, sometimes I see things on our agenda, and I know some of them are very important, but then there's other ones, I'm like, this is not important at this moment. So that's up to you as the chair, the mayor, to decide what is the priority of those meetings. So you can decide those things. But if I put in a referral, I don't expect it to be on that very next meeting. And if it is, great, but if it takes, like, like you said, we have, the next couple of meetings are full, I understand it might wait. But if, unless it's of urgency, you know, I mean, but I just think trying to get two other people to simply get a rule reviewed, it, it's just, that's not what we're, that's not what we're about. I mean, that's, I mean, this is so, and then some people, they tell me outside of council, they're like, oh, yeah, I think you should get that reviewed, but they won't reply to the email. So there are problems here. So, um, or, or I sent a referral out, and then somebody says to me, oh, yeah, well, let me think about it, because I don't know, I, I might like that. It's not about whether you like it or not. It's like, could we have a discussion about it at the council? That's all I'm asking, and you can decide there. And let me make my, my, my full debate there, and to give you all the information that I have, instead of just in simple an email. I think the process, like you said, it's not, it's not the best. But, um, I think section F should be removed, and we should go with section J as the primary. Thank you.
I think that
I have Counselor Heath and Counselor Obray.
No, no, I'll defer to Counselor Obray.
Counselor Obray, or Chairman Obray.
Are, are you talking about F under rule nine, committee and referrals?
Yes, that's, that was the point of contention, yes.
But it says that this, that, that's not what it says. It says, "Upon the request of three counselors, the mayor shall refer a matter to a standing committee." That's not, that's not the council.
The COW.
Further.
The COW is the standing committee.
It has to go through, to get something on committee of the whole, as the rules are right now, to get something on the committee of the whole agenda, you need three counselors wishing to pursue the item.
I stand corrected.
Or even to go to the rules committee, or personnel and appointments, or now the public safety. You, you need three refer people to stand by John, that one.
Counselor Heath?
I, I don't know, was everybody finished discussing that? Because mine's totally unrelated.
Well, I'm sure there will be much more discussion on this, because the, the rules committee has to go back and figure this out. I would say, if you have suggestions, like Counselor Franco says she does not like that particular section, she offered an alternative. I would say if the rest of the council has an issue with that section, you should, instead of just saying, I don't like it, suggest an alternative, because then Chairman Obray, Counselor Baumgartner, Counselor Parker have something to work with. And, you know, we, we've asked a lot of them. They've done a lot of work on this. And I, I think it's, you know, our responsibility to make suggestions, instead of just saying we don't like what they're doing. So I, I would assume that Chairman Obray and Counselor Baumgartner have heard Counselor Franco's concerns. We have one alternative suggested. If others have alternatives to the current referral process, please write them up and get them to the rules committee. Counselor Heath?
Okay, first, I, I agree, those two rules contradict each other. They sound like they should, like they do, so they need to be both in the same spot. You know, there needs to be some clarification on, on what we're doing there, for sure. That's, that's been a question since the beginning. And the second thing I wanted to say was more of a global thing. You know, I, I've worked on rules before. I helped with the city council rules. The first six months I was on the town council, you know, Juliette, Joe and I went through, and I went back and forth with Betsy and the town assistant town manager at the time, I, I forget her name off the top of my head, several other people for outside information, and, and it's arduous. And even for the DTC, we spent over two years rewriting our rules, and that's a lot of work. And, and, you know, I really, I want you all to know that the reason I went screaming away from that committee is because it's so much work, and I, I don't, I don't envy you at all, but, you know, I really respect all the, I respect you for your work and for all that you've put into it. And so, everything tonight, I, I hope it's, it's all constructive and, and helpful, but so thank you for, for looking into this and for having yet more meetings.
Counselor Bordelone?
Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, Rachel's recommendation or thoughts for changing that section that I spoke of as well, that's was the solution, is to figure out a way to streamline that and, and not make it so tough to get something on, so. But I, I think Rachel stated it perfectly, so. Thanks.
Counselor Obray, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, if everybody would be kind enough to send us emails, it would be very, very helpful. At this point, you know, I have notes, but not enough. So whatever you can send would be very helpful.
Very good. And that's what you've been asking us all along, so thank you so much. I do have one item of other business when we're done discussing rules, so is there any more discussion on the rules? Counselor Franco?
I was wondering on section G, on page 10, and that is, I guess, still, that's in rule 10, section G. "Any subject matter referred to a standing committee which will result in proposed ordinance show, after adequate discussion, not to exceed 60 days be referred to the COW." So my question is, we, we send something out to a committee, like, um, or a task force or anything, is, is that like a standing committee, is that just in reference to the COW? I mean, like, committee of the whole rules, personnel appointments, and public safety, or are these other?
And just, the standing committees are the ones you just read?
That's it.
COW, public safety, personnel appointment rules.
So if we send something to public safety, let's just say for, as an example, they have to come back to us with, without going over 60 days with an answer. Is that what that's saying?
That's what it's saying.
But if you read the beginning, oh, wait, I've looked at, I was looking at H, I'm sorry. We're on G.
Yeah.
Which result, which result after adequate discussion.
I think that's only if it results in a, in ordinance, is that right?
But how would we know?
I think this is, this is from the old rules. I don't think this is anything they've added, so this is what's been in existence.
Yeah, well, we're going over the whole rules as the, you know, so I wanted to discuss this one. Because my question is, how do we know it's going to be an ordinance if we send something? Because my question is, how do we know it's going to be an ordinance if we send something? Or if it's just going to be a policy or if it's going to be an ordinance? I mean, and if it's there for 60 days since the day it's referred. How does this work?
I, I, I'm speaking out of turn, but I would support, uh, removing that 60 days or, or doing whatever that's.
I, I, I would say we should probably find out why it's there. Um, and, um, before we take it out. Find out if there's some kind of charter provision. Um, I don't know. I'm not sure why it's that way, whether it was just to be expedient. Or whether it's there for some other purpose. So I would say before we make a decision to get rid of it or to change it, we need to find out, um. The purpose of it being there. So if you could, if you could email that as well, and then, um, that can be just sent to. Perhaps a manager can find the answer, um, as to why it's, it's there. And we just don't want to take something out that's there for a reason, you know? It may seem weird to us, but it, it might not be something we've ever dealt with, but another counselor may, a council may have dealt with it. So. Um, I would say, let's see, before we get rid of it, let's check and make sure it's not necessary for some reason.
I completely agree. That's why I was questioning because I'm thinking there might be some things that were referred to the COW that maybe we were going to make an ordinance and. Did it sit with us for longer than 60 days? So at the COW, so I don't know. Um. Or are there anything on our, our pending agenda items that might be made into an ordinance that were referred to the COW? But we didn't act on quick enough. So I, I just had questions on that one. I also have on L. On the same page. Um. And. I know the mayor would probably have the best answer for this one, but it has the word adjourned. And I was wondering, was it supposed to be recess or was it supposed to be adjourned?
So during budget meetings, you, you recess, you don't adjourn.
Right. So it says here.
Don't adjourn till the end.
Right. So it says the COW has one budget meeting which consists of several sessions. Each session adjourns to the definitive time. Fix the time to which to adjourn. It's usually recess, correct?
Well, we, we recess to a time definite. So Counselor Heed, you look like you're chomping at the bit. What were you gonna? Go ahead.
Uh, I don't remember the exact reasoning, but we did question that the last time around and there is a specific reason for why it's written that way. I don't remember what it is. I'm sorry.
We, we do say recess. We do not adjourn the budget meetings until the very end. Um, I'm not sure either. And perhaps you can dig that up in your notes for us, Counselor Heed and find out why. It says adjourn rather than recess because we do recess. We do not, we, we adjourn once, we adjourn the budget meeting once and that's at the very end after everything's done. Okay.
I have one other question.
Counselor Borlon?
I'm not. I'm not sure where this would go relation. I might have flipped, but. Is there anything in here that could be changed to, to? Allow public comment more than once a month?
Again, that's something, a suggestion you could make to the committee to discuss.
Okay. I just think it's important if we're going to open up, you know, we're opening up the rules. So it's good to. Look at them all. And I know there's been a lot of complaints where. We limit public comment to a certain amount of time and. It's once a month and sometimes it, it falls not pertaining to an issue and it's hard and. Sometimes not everybody can make that one day a month. So opening that up to allow. I don't know, a little bit more opportunity for public deliberation and involvement. So. I'll send that email then. Thank you.
Counselor Franco, is this a new hand or is this left from the last time?
New hand.
Go ahead.
I would also like.
You muted yourself, Counselor Franco.
I'm sorry about that. I'd also like to discuss something about, um. Hold on one second. I'll have to find it. Um, something that came in a recent email. From the town manager that I think that should be discussed at the rules. Um, he recently stated that. Um, counselors meeting with department heads and more than two employees. That the town manager must report that to all, um, that he, not that he must. I'll actually read it. Said, um, moving forward, whenever a council member asks for a meeting with multiple employees. Within a department or more than one department head. Not counting me, I plan on letting the full council know about the meeting. To that end, Counselor Franco is scheduled to me and he explains my meeting. Um, and what my meeting is going to be about. Um. So. He also thinks it's best practice for the counselors to seek to, um, to meet with the departments that involve more than. Um. And that the council, counselors should let the other counselors know. It's, it's not something that I don't think that we should be putting on him. And, um. It's in our roles, I believe it, uh, that it states that we need the town manager's approval to, to talk to staff. It doesn't say anywhere that we need to have the town manager go and report back to all the other counselors. Who we're talking to. And what the topic is. And if that's going to be the case. That should be in our rules, but I personally think there's, there's no, there's no need for it. And I don't want, I don't think the town manager should have to report back to everybody. Who I'm meeting with and why I'm meeting with them. Especially when I come back and I report to the council, my meetings.
So that brings me to my other business, which I will hold. I will be making referral regarding that item. So. Um, I'll be, uh, asking for support from two other counselors for my referral after we're done with this current discussion. Counselor Heed?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I did find a note. Under my rules, um, folder, uh, that actually was a mistake, uh, and we had intended to fix it and it doesn't look like it got fixed. So the COW. Has one budget meeting which consists of several sessions. Each session adjourns to a definite time. Quote, fix the time to which, uh, to, uh, uh, I'm sorry, I. Not adjourn, uh, what is it?
Recession.
Recession. So I, I, there's a note saying right here that needs to be fixed and it never got fixed. So that's my apology. That's rule number 10. Letter number L like Larry, uh, that is, uh, fix the time to which to recess.
So, so both adjourn should probably be changed to recess.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Borlon?
Yeah, um, in response to Counselor Franco's comment, um. That email that had come out, was that something that's a rule or that's just something he chose to put out, right? I mean, that no. That wasn't something that was required of the town manager. That was just something after that meeting that he'd then put out saying he was going to say that. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Counselor Borlon, are you sat?
Yeah, I just had a question.
Okay.
Did you go through? I'm sorry. Did you hear me?
Um, I thought you were making a statement. It was. The manager can't make rules. So the manager just made his suggestion. Yes.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure. So it came out, it was, I wanted to make sure that. That wasn't already a rule that he was just saying he's going to make sure he was doing. So that was a suggestion he had put forward. So, I mean. I, that. Think he doesn't have to do it then. I mean, it doesn't, I don't know that it has to be a rule. That was just something he put forward, but. It wasn't really driven by anybody in particular, was it? Or it was just a suggestion that he had put forward. I don't know. Or maybe that's what he wants to do. I don't know. I, I don't know. I just. I guess I. I don't see it as a huge rule change if that's just something he was just tossing out there. But anyway, thank you.
This is John. Can I just quickly speak to that?
Sure.
Over the last three years, I've been repeatedly bitten by these type of things about meetings and not informing people and other things. It just comes up over and over again. As of right now, that will be my rule until I'm told otherwise, until something else comes up that I'll report all things just because. I, I can't tell you how many times I've had people angry at me with these things over the last three years.
Wow.
Until it's figured out, I need to tell everyone what's going on.
Yeah. All right. I hear you. Sorry for that. Too bad.
Okay, um, I, I have, um. O'Bree, Franco and Heed, and I don't know the order. So, um, Counselor O'Bree will defer to you since you're chair.
Not me. I'm off. Thanks.
Um. I'm going to save it for another time because it doesn't really pertain to the rules. I wanted to, um. You know. I, I think that what the manager is doing is correct. Um, now I'm talking about it and I said I wasn't going to, I'm getting too tired, but. It, it wasn't so much the meeting, it was the actions afterwards. I felt like the council was really blindsided.
And. Counselor O'Bree, I'm going to interject at this moment and, um, can we keep the? Discussion on the pending rule changes at this point, please?
Sure. No problem.
Thank you, Counselor, Chairman O'Bree. Counselor Franco?
I, I have to, I have to say though, I, uh. Then, never mind. You, you tie up my hands a little bit here.
Well, we're, we're, we're working on the rules right now. I'm going to make a referral before we adjourn. And then we'll have the opportunity to speak. So, um, Counselor Franco?
So. Let me just. Put this out there. If a referral is made after we're done with this topic of the rules, and this could be discussed in this rule committee, this rule. Under rules. Um, if it's made under other business, we can't have debate. It's just a referral. You might be able to state your opinion, maybe get two other people to support you and it goes to rule committee and that's it. Here, we could debate it right now and we can discuss it because we might add it to the rule or not add it to the rule. And this is where the discussion and the debate could happen. So, um, regarding that topic. So it's not just the rules that are written. It's could we add one more or do we not add that one more? I think when. Um. Counselors contact the town manager angry at him because. You know, he didn't let them know that I went to a meeting because it was my meeting. And I talked to two town staff people. So just remember. Like if you're going to go to a meeting with two librarians. Or you're going to go down to the filtration plant and talk to two people down there. You're going to have to let, the whole council has to know about it and they have, and obviously they're going to know what you're talking about too. And if you create that rule. You're also gonna, I mean, right now we're all one party. Imagine if that rules in there and there's not one party. I mean, it, it's, it's not right. I, I mean, I don't think. Many people on this council have gone to meetings with people. Department heads. Other. Other. People and. I had.
Franco, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt just like I interrupted Counselor O'Bree because this is not on the rules right now. It's not part of the rules now that we're discussing. I am going to make, I have my reasons for what I'm going to do. It's not pertinent to what we're discussing right now. Counselor Heed, um, has left us a message and, um, we're going to be down to five counselors soon. Um, and at this point, um. Uh, I'm going to be making a referral to the rules committee. Um, because we need a process. Where. Counselors, um, can interact with town staff. And it needs to be a clear process that we all can agree to and we all understand. Regarding the individual behavior of a particular of eight counselor, doesn't matter which counselor it is. I will be writing something up and emailing it to all of you tomorrow. And I would be looking for two other counselors to support it as per our current rules. That's why I'm choosing not to do this tonight because I, you don't have the language in front of you. And I'm professing that I want people to have the correct language in front of them. That's why I'm choosing not to do this this evening. I'm going to write something up. You will be able to read it. I will look for the support of two other counselors and at that point then I will refer it to rules. When Chairman O'Bree calls her next meeting to continue the discussion of these rules, they can then choose to take it up at that time. So we, we have a problem with the way things were done. Um, the last time because I don't think we're all on the same page. As to how things should be functioning and my goal is to clarify that process. And again, I don't believe it is the manager's job to do these things. I think it's the council's job. So that's my referral and you could look for an email from me tomorrow. And we are at, we are still at six counselors. So, um. We are now almost at 11 guys, at 11 o'clock. So. It, it's up to, it's up to you all.
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second that heed.
O'Bree seconded by Heed. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. We are at.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed?
Borlon.
Borlon. And abstentions. So in favor, O'Bree? Heed? Uh, Franco, are you in favor or opposed?
So.
We're adjourning. We're adjourning. Are you in favor or opposed?
Will we come back right to it?
I am taking a vote right now. I need to know if you're in favor.
I can, I, point of information.
I'm in the middle of a vote.
I have point of information.
I'm in the middle of a vote.
We, we can't.
Counselor Baumgartner, are you in favor or opposed?
I'm in favor.
Baumgartner's in favor of adjourning. Four in favor, one opposed. Counselor Franco, do you wish to cast a vote?
I have a question.
So I take that as an abstention?
You have taken other people's questions.
Not during the middle of a vote. I'm sorry. This is not proper. This is not proper. We are in the middle of a vote. We have four in favor. One opposed. One note, one choosing not to vote. So we are adjourned at 10:59.